So, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome all of you to the November 30th, 2021, meeting of the Coward County Board of Commissioners. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Weems if he would give us an invocation, please.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Dear God, thank you for your amazing power and work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. Thank you that you are able to bring hope through even the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. Thank you for your great love and care. Thank you for your mercy and grace. Guide us through our proceedings today and bless our community. We all call home. In your name we pray. Amen. I'm sorry, Ms. President.
I don't know what church you're affiliated with, but we're happy to have you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented? Chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public service announcements. Today is Giving Tuesday. Just a reminder to everyone out there that today is designated a day to give to your favorite charity. We've put a plug in recently for United Way. United Way does a lot of great work here in Southern Maryland, but I will add that you all have your own special charities, and we would ask that today you give as best you can to help support those in need through whatever device you see best. I don't believe we have any other public service announcements today. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Coward County Health Department. Local Behavioral Health Authority. This being Donald?
That's okay.
Good morning.
My name's Andrea McDonald-Finglin. I'm the Director at the Calvert County Local Behavioral Health Authority at the Calvert County Health Department. And I've just come here today sort of as a public service announcement, but to invite you to an event that we are hosting coming up on December 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. We are holding it at the Prince Frederick Library, but also we'll have a hybrid virtual component. We are both celebrating and educating the public on the innovative approaches to treating substance use disorder that Calvert County has implemented in order to reduce overdose deaths and to increase recovery within our community. So we have a presentation from Dr. Drew Fuller, who is the Medical Director for the Crisis Response Team, as well as a panel discussion with experts, both from the Health Department, from Calvert Health Medical Center, as well as Avenue's Recovery Center. So we have a panel of experts to answer questions that both we've come up with ahead of time, but also questions from the, oh gosh, the audience as well. So we have the ability to, again, we have a very small in-person attendance, and we would invite each of you to come and be a part of this experience so that, again, we can educate you as well as the community at large about the services available within our county to fight overdose and to end the stigma associated with the disease of addiction. So I have a flyer. Is there any way to? Oh, you got it? Oh, great. So, and then I also have some gifts for you, promotional items.
Good job. Worth less than $24.99.
Maybe, probably. So for each of you, and if you don't already have a flyer, there's one in the bag as well. And just, you'll see that the branding, so to speak, it says MAT Saves Lives, and that's referencing medication-assisted treatment for opioid use disorder and other substance use disorders. And we just really want the community to know that medications can save lives when it comes to substance use disorder. That just like diabetes, just like high blood pressure and asthma, that medication can really be life or death for a lot of people. And the same goes for substance use disorders, that overdose rates dramatically go down when medication becomes involved as part of a treatment plan. So that was, that was, that was all. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes.
Some of the members in the audience, did they come in support of you today?
I didn't invite anybody, no.
Okay.
Is this a stress ball?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
He might need two.
Yeah, he's gonna need one for each hand.
We have more. I'll send one over for you. I'll bring some more bags by.
So maybe I missed it, but on the flyer, I don't see where you're holding this event.
It's the Prince Frederick Library on December 15th. Let's see. So you can register. You guys don't need to, you're right.
Yeah, I'm looking. I don't see it.
So there is a registration link for anybody who has access to the virtual copy of this, but you gentlemen will not need to register in order to attend in person. But there is also the ability to sign on virtually through Zoom, and we have the meeting link as well as a QR code for anyone who knows how to use those. I literally this weekend learned how to do that on my phone. So I learned something new. So yes, there's a lot of different options for attendance. We do ask that the community, if they want to come in person, because we do have very limited in-person seating due to COVID restrictions, that they register using the Eventbrite link. But if you guys want to come in person, you're free to join us. And there will be dinner.
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 Dinner. That's not on here either.
And more stuff, more stress balls. So if you want another stress ball, you can come to the event, and I'll make sure you get another stress ball.
Dinner's $24.99.
Yeah, it's okay. So the event is Prince Frederick Library, December 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening, and you can zoom in if you don't want to come in person.
Yes, absolutely.
And you have limited seating, so you have to register ahead of time.
Yes.
And I learned how to use Q codes because at Bass Pro Shop, that's the only way you get in line at the gun counter.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes. Other than that, I have no, didn't have a clue.
I just thought my phone didn't do it, because everyone I know has an iPhone, and so they're like, you just open your camera. But that's not how it works on Android, so.
You gotta upgrade.
Yeah. Oh, yeah?
All right. Well, thank you for the information.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. And that's all Wednesday night, I believe?
Yes, it is.
Yes. All right.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much.
And we'll make sure that CMR promotes the event.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are no microphones, so I'm gonna try to project this for you. Two rounds of appointments this morning, and you are. The first appointment is for the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, and staff is requesting that you appoint Susan DeLegan to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. That way, appoint Susan DeLegan to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah. Were there two people up for this position?
That I am not sure of. One second. Yes, John?
Yes, Commissioner. There are two applicants for actually two positions. We're still awaiting some response from the Advisory Board as to how to fill another vacancy. But the recommendation that came over from the Advisory Board was for Mr. DeLegan to be appointed to fill this vacancy.
Okay, gentlemen, you have two applicants, and one has been recommended, and there's a motion. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Your second round of appointments this morning is for the Calvert County Commission for Women. And staff is requesting that you reappoint Joan Wenship to the Calvert County Commission for Women. And you have four vacancies that will remain following this appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we reappoint Joan Winslet to the Coward County Commission for Women. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just for public awareness, they still have four vacancies on the Coward County Commission for Women. So if you feel so inclined, we'd appreciate your participation. So the next item on the agenda is consent. There are five items under consent. Department of Public Works, Clayhamon Road, Hold Harmless Agreement for 10-Foot Widening Strip Dedication. Item two, Department of Public Works Budget Adjustment 032. Item three, Department of Community Resources Public Transportation FY 2022 Capital Grant Agreement. Item four, Department of Community Resources Budget Adjustment Capital Campaign. Item five, Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation ITB 2022-024 Restroom Facility Construction. That's at the Ward Farm. Is there any objection to the items under consent? Hearing none. Those items will be adopted as submitted. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Department of Community Resources, Director Moreland.
Am I prepping for a pretty big presentation?
Yeah, buckle up. My name is Jennifer Moreland. I'm the Director of Community Resources, and I have my Division Chief for Office on Aging, Ed Sullivan, here. And he's gonna introduce some of our Commission on Aging members.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Jennifer mentioned, Ed Sullivan from the Office on Aging. I have with me to my right Dr. Suda Haley from our local Commission on Aging, as you all have appointed. And she's also with AARP Maryland Executive Council. We also have other Commission on Aging members with us in the audience today. Behind me, we have Yolanda Hipskey, Terry Long, Elizabeth Foster, and Ann Weems, all members of the Calvert County Commission on Aging, joining us today. Welcome.
Thank you. We have a very vibrant group of members for Commission on Aging, which is exciting.
Excellent.
I'm gonna give you some background. The Commission on Aging advocates for the well-being of seniors and individuals with disabilities, and advises the Board of County Commissioners and the Office on Aging on how to better meet their needs by fostering the development of programs, housing, and services. Discussion. This past year, the Department of Community Resources, Office on Aging Division, and the Commission on Aging partnered to learn more about the AARP's Aging Friendly Communities Initiative, which aims to improve the environmental, civic, economic, and social life of seniors. The Commission on Aging Chair, Reverend Charles Harrell, who couldn't be with us today, and AARP Maryland Executive Council member Suda Haley organized a presentation from a local aging-friendly community, which garnered wide support from Commission on Aging members. Fiscal impact, none. Conclusion, recommendation, to provide background on the Aging Friendly Community Initiative and seek the Board of County Commissioners' support for a local planning process and commitment letter to AARP. So, without further ado, just kind of went over the purpose there. Show of hands, how many of you have heard of aging-friendly communities? All right. Yeah, I figured you Commissioner Gadway had in your profession, but Commissioner Weems as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not surprised about you, Mark.
You're old.
So, so there is an AARP network of age-friendly states and communities. Next slide, Darryl. And I want to give you some background on our aging community. I know that's something that you'd be interested in hearing. In Calvert County, in the next 25 years, the number of residents aged 60 and older in Calvert County are projected to increase by 30.2%. Alzheimer's, depression, cancer, diabetes, rheumatoid arthritis, and chronic disease are on the rise in the Medicare population ages 65 and older, and nearly 14% of Calvert's population currently are Medicare enrollees, and we have 1.5% on Medicaid. So that's about 13,374 people that are on Medicare that are seniors. There are fewer options for those living over poverty, so on Medicaid, but without financial means for private health or assisted living services. One in five Americans older than 65 are at risk now of becoming, and this is the first time I've heard this term, elder orphans, defined as someone who's aging alone with no family available to address their caregiving needs. According to a 2015 AARP Public Policy Report, by 2030, the ratio of elder orphans to seniors will increase to one in four. 20% of people over the age of 55 experience mental disorders that are not a part of normal aging. And certainly, we see that in the Office on Aging. We have case management staff that are involved in trying to address those needs, but it is difficult work. I say this all to make the case that our aging community is projected to grow and have more complex needs, and our county needs to be prepared. And joining the AARP Aging Friendly Communities Initiative, it's a statewide and national initiative, will provide us a good launch pad. Go back. Thank you. So there's a nexus between communities that are age-friendly and livable. AARP defines this as communities that are safe and secure, have affordable and appropriate housing and transportation options, and offer supportive community features and services that enhance personal independence, allow residents to age in place, and provide opportunities for residents to engage fully in social and economic and civil life in your community. In fact, they did a survey, AARP did a home and community-based preferences survey a few years ago, and they found that people aged 50 and older say it is extremely important, or very important, to have policies to ensure older adults have an equal opportunity to work for as long as they want or need regardless of their age. And that was 66%. And certainly, we have a lot of working seniors in this community. My mom is one of them. She's 74 and going strong. We also have, the survey also said that affordable housing options such as active adult and assisted living communities, and those with shared facilities and outdoor spaces were also a preference, and 62% of seniors said that. And what they really wanted to do in this survey was remain in their community for as long as possible. 77% of the survey respondents said that, and in their current residence for as long as possible, and 76% said that. So we see that too, that people want to stay in their homes. So what programs can we put in place to help them do that?
Jen, question, and it's kind of twofold. You know, obviously, you don't want to leave your house. It's a traumatic event. But is it mostly financial, or is it the house is too much to handle? Because I know both come into play. I know.
It really is both.
But, you know, so, and, you know what I mean? And it's, it's, I see, it's traumatizing. You know, I'm not far from Asbury.
Yep.
And I've run into a lot of folks that it's, they understand why they're moving down there and stuff, but they, it is now a complete change of life, you know? I said, where are you coming from? You know, I've left my house of 40 years or what have you. Does that know what you run into if?
Losing independence is tough, and we don't live in a generation where people lived with their families for years and years, and they were used to.
Not like the past.
Right, exactly. So that, particularly now, that's very, that's really a struggle for people to leave their home and feel like they're losing their sense of identity and independence.
Like, Southern Pines was awesome addition, but do we see anything like that coming in the future? I mean, because 30% is a norm. If I heard you right.
Yes.
30%, I mean, if you took, I mean, easy math, right? 100,000 people, that's 30,000 people now that enter the realm of, I don't want to power wash the house anymore.
Exactly.
I don't want to cut grass. I can't keep up with it. But I don't want to leave either.
Yeah. And some of it, so having larger housing facilities like Southern Pines is certainly a help. Having, if you're familiar with the community in Owings, that's right at the route to Chaneyville Road, that actually is a very, an easier house and an easier yard. They're kind of closer together. They had reduced setbacks with those properties, so they're built, it was built in such a way that it's a lot easier for seniors to live in, and it's what we call middle housing.
1 to 10, how prepared do you think we are for the oncoming years? 10 being the best.
If truly the population grows, we're at a four right now. We need, we need to have more housing available for them. Or they'll leave, and we'll lose a good base.
Jennifer, I'd assume there's also two levels of senior housing requirements. There are those people that can afford to live in a facility that, where they don't have as much requirements, but then there are others who can't afford and need assistance just to be able to have someplace to live.
Yes, and both needs exist.
So of the 30%, if you can, how do you break down of the 30% which categories they're in? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, we, we were, there is a way to do that, the 30%, with the 30% growth. Typically, what it's been done, though, is on the housing side, and we should have better census data coming forward in the next year. In the past, it's been through housing projections that they look at that, and those don't really break down by age. They break down by demographics. So we do have that data, and I've shared with it in past presentations, that where the gaps exist are those kind of under 80% AMI. So 30%, 40%, 50%, 60%, those are the gaps that really exist. The housing, the apartments that were just built, Calvert, or, I'm sorry, Beachtree, for instance, those are really built more for people at an 80% AMI. So it's that, it's that extreme poverty, sure, we do have those gaps, but also that, you know, low-income seniors, you know, they're not, they're, they're, they're living off of their social security, and maybe they're working a part-time job.
Right.
Do you want to add to that, Ed?
Commissioners, we have data that I've just received from the Housing Authority. We have 1,500 seniors in Calvert County that are on a waitlist for Calvert Pines 1, Calvert Pines 2, and Southern Pines 1, and a few in the North Beach area, not nearly as many. But we have 1,500 seniors on the waiting list for those complexes I just mentioned.
And these are Calvert residents currently. These are not from out of county. These are Calvert residents.
Commissioner Hart, I cannot say for certain that they are all Calvert County residents, but I would imagine that a large portion of them are Calvert County residents.
Because I think that's key, too. No disrespect to other jurisdictions, but we're gonna have all we can handle to take care of our own, and I don't know how, because I know a lot of state and federal monies get in there, and then I don't know how you try to prioritize Calvert residents first, but that's the goal. You know, you say you grew up here, or you've spent your time here, you know, and now you want to stay here. You have connections. Like you said, you might not have all your family members, and maybe it's your close friends have, you know, bridged that gap. Your son or daughter could be around the country, you know, and to leave that now too is traumatic. So that would be, you know, a big concern for me, is keep retaining our own.
Yeah. We, so if you recall, with the Community Development Block Grant with Southern Pines 2, we did track that, because that was an area of interest, and it's also data that we have to report. And so we were able to see that the majority of all the residents were from Calvert County, which we, you know, that was important to us as well, even though we couldn't make that a mandate. Because of the federal funding, we were able to track it and see that that was the case. And a lot of it depends on how you market, too. Are you working with, you know, are you promoting it at different places where seniors will go in this community?
Do we have any type of plan in place to address these 1,500 in going forward? Or is that, there's, today is the groundwork for?
It's part of the groundwork, because this is comprehensive. So if we move forward and talk about the different eight domains of livability, it certainly covers housing and transportation. So those are two areas we know that there's, you know, need, particular need for this population. But it also covers outdoor spaces and buildings, civic participation and employment, community and health services. And so the AARP, they actually have this domains, with this domains of livability, they have this livability index, where they look at different scores in neighborhoods and communities across the US. Would you like to know our score? I was curious. We're 48. We're, so on a scale from 0 to 100, we are smack in the middle. Some things we do great on, and some things we're not. So in terms of housing, yeah.
I mean, you can see, Commissioners, from the eight domains, our county addresses many of these things. So these are things we are currently addressing. We are simply looking to enhance and improve our services, but we are certainly addressing these items currently, as you know.
So like, and a great example is, we have a very high voting rate for our seniors. So in terms of civic participation, that's something that's really good.
All the volunteerism, all you have to do is go see the museums and things like that.
Yeah.
But that's what's so concerning, because we have been told in the past from outside agencies, oh, there's no need, there's nobody knocking down the door, but yet you just say there's 1,500 people right there. That sounds like a lot of customers to me.
Yes.
But we're told that we need these other things that, you know, I completely disagree with, but that was my concern seven years ago when I got here, and we were standing at Southern Pines, and that addition was coming on, that I thought that's the road we were on.
Yep. And the data tells the story. That is the road we need to be on.
Yes. And I think the community supports that as well. I think the community supports having, having homes for seniors and apartments for seniors, and I don't think they support some of these other things, but.
Yep. In terms of housing, we did score high on our availability of subsidized housing, which might surprise people, but looking at our population numbers, we score high on that. We scored low on our housing costs because they are so high. But when you develop more, you know, moderate housing, middle housing for seniors, like the project, for instance, in Chaneyville, that's gonna adjust, that's gonna adjust the market. So, you know, it's gonna bring down the cost of some of those apartments. The problem is, we just don't, we have this big gap with middle housing. Okay. So, moving on. You can, I'm sorry. There you go. So I wanted to talk about the process for an aging-friendly community. The first step is establishing a commission and selecting a convener. It's really a dynamic planning process that's focused on continuous improvement. So you have a needs assessment, you develop an action plan, you have an evaluation plan to see how successful you are, and then you submit the plan to AARP for review and approval, and you continue to have that ongoing communication with AARP to tell them what's worked for you and best practices, and then they also support you with the tools to be successful. So, and I know Suda, as we talk, she can talk a little bit more about that. But there's a, there's an ongoing process with AARP. Next slide. So there's no fee to join. We just have to submit the application as a county, and we have to provide a letter of support to AARP. Another option for us is passing a resolution in support of membership as an aging-friendly county, so that's something that we could do as well. Next step. So once enrolled, I mentioned, we form a commission and we select a community convener, so somebody who's gonna be at the helm of this. Now, it's not just government people that are involved with this. In fact, for the majority of the folks are from different nonprofits and the business sector, because it's meant to be a whole community-wide initiative. And so sometimes you might have an aging director who's at the helm as the convener, but you would also have different partners that are playing an important role. And in fact, when you look at some of the other communities that are applying for grants after they get this aging-friendly community status, it's the different nonprofits that can apply for these grants now because, because we are an aging-friendly community. So I'd love to see that. I'd love to have that option for some of our nonprofits that support our aging community. So we, I mentioned that there's an action plan, and that, of course, would be informed by different community surveys that we do that look at those livable community areas. We have to make a statement about what can be achieved and have target dates for completion, and we have to identify different participating organizations, and we have to have indicators in place to measure progress. This is not a static document. It's continually changing with revisions and amendments as we see fit. with revisions and amendments as we see fit. Next. And AARP, as I mentioned before, they help, they provide us a toolkit, they give us different milestones as members that we should work towards, they give us examples of other plans from around the state or the nation, and help us along that pathway of being successful in this, they give us different data sources so that we know we're measuring success correctly, and I was really interested to learn that aging-friendly communities, it's not just AARP that's involved in this work, there are foundations across the United States that are providing grants to communities that endeavor to be aging-friendly, so that was, to know that there's more grants and more opportunities to, for instance, expand services in our community, that would be helping people that are living, trying to live independently at home, or that could help us create more universal design features in our housing, in our, like, senior housing, so those are all exciting, and I've been doing some research on all of those grants that I intend to bring forward, but I can tell you that there's a Next Fifty Initiative, there's the Johnny Hartman Foundation, Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, Tufts Health Foundation, so Pfizer has given money towards this endeavor, I think they all see the writing on the wall, we have an aging, you know, nationally, we're aging, so we've got to, we've got to be prepared, yeah. I hope we're lucky. So, next. So, the important points are aging-friendly communities, how they fall into our current planning process, well, we just finished the comprehensive plan a few years ago, and a lot of our visions and goals in that comprehensive plan align with this Aging Friendly Communities Initiative, and I just thought I'd give some examples for under Chapter Six in Housing, Providing for a Full Range of Housing Types in Town Centers to Attract and Retain Multi-Generational Communities, Supporting Aging in Place Through Universal Housing Design Units and Supportive Services, Especially Near Health and Support Services, so those are just examples, but there's other examples under the Transportation Section of Comprehensive Plan and the Government and Communities and Facilities Section, and then we're also in a town center master plan process right now, so this will help us bring new ideas to that, those processes as well, so we're really excited, I'm, what makes me so excited about this is we have an aging commission that is energized and supporting this, and I know, I know we're going to do good things, and I'm excited to see increased engagement from our senior population and our families, caregivers, people that are wanting our seniors to be successful and living independently and healthy. So, next is our, the follow-up is a commitment letter to the AARP, which I've drafted, and it's been reviewed by CMR, so that would be the next step for signature, and we could also pass a resolution, and we could work on, our commission could work on developing our Aging Friendly Communities Planning Committee, getting that started.
Gentlemen, as a senior, having lived in this county on Plum Point for over thirty years, having raised our family here through our schools, and now with the Commission on Aging and also serving as the, on the Executive Council of Maryland, I am just so thrilled that we have brought this to our county, and what is more exciting is that our tri-county area, like St. Mary's and Charles, are so excited about this that they will be joined, so we will be leading the tri-county area in this, so I really, really would urge you to do this, and while I still have this microphone, I also want to say that the AARP is bringing resources to our Asian-American Pacific Islander community here, I know we are just five thousand of us here in the county, but we are going to bring the resources to them and do outreach to them, just want to let you know about that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you have any questions for the three of us about this plan or next steps?
Sounds like a good plan, so you have a letter prepared for us?
Yes, yes, so, I think all you need to do is, just sign it, yes.
And you mentioned a resolution?
Yes, I don't have a resolution prepared, but my goal is to come back to you at the start of the year and introduce our committee and announce our convener, and so we could do the resolution at that time.
Well, Jennifer, you do a really good job of keeping us aware of the issues regarding seniors in this county, and, you know, we've talked recently about housing needs and requirements, and the building community doesn't see, I don't know how to phrase this, but, value, you know, we've got some new projects coming, and we've continued to ask why there's no senior components to those projects, and we get all kinds of pushback, and we, I think we've tried to reduce cost to make it more attractive to developers, but so far that hasn't worked, I don't know what we have to do to get some senior housing, because, you know, it's those people that have a need for assistance, it's also those people that don't really need assistance, they just want to live in a community where, with other seniors, where they don't have the needs and requirements of the home they're currently in, so.
Yeah, I think you definitely strike a chord with a lot of people have those thoughts, even in communities, I live in Breezy Point, and even in a community like that, they're not, the houses are not close enough together, they have that social connection, seniors don't just have to be with seniors, they're actually happy to be with multiple generations nearby, but living closer together, feeling more connected, that's really important to them, and we don't have that in our communities now, we don't have that kind of density, and it has to be planned.
And they just want to be safe, because just so happened, I took care of two orphaned elderly women, and purely coincidence, when one died, I just fell into the lap of another one, and they didn't have any need for financial, I'm sorry, did that come out wrong? They didn't have any requirements for financial assistance, they just needed somebody to look in on them, make sure they had what they needed, the last lady I took care of, we ended up with nursing care twenty-four seven for her, but she didn't have anybody in this country to help her, and I, you know, oversaw what was going on, but, you know, they're alone in the world, and, you know, they just want to have some security that somebody's going to check on them once in a while and make sure that everything is okay, so, you know, and like you said, if you live in a community of seniors, they know that, and they understand that, and they will look in on each other and help each other out, so I don't think there's any issue with us agreeing to participate in the program, so.
Thank you, we appreciate your support.
I'm a senior, I hope they're going to look at me.
I got you, buddy.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, I don't know if there's a vote required for this, I think just signing the letter.
Mr. Kelly, Attorney.
Good morning, Commissioners, we did prepare a motion to support the local planning process and commitment to AARP's Aging Friendly Communities Initiative.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt and pass said motion supporting a local planning process in a letter of commitment to AARP's Aging Friendly Communities Initiative, which aims to improve the environmental, civic, economic, and social life of seniors.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second that supports a local planning process and a letter of commitment to AARP's Aging Friendly Communities Initiative, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you. A senior's got to stick together. These youngsters up here beside me don't have a clue.
Are we having a problem with senior gangs in a community?
Maybe we should start one. Thank you all very much. So, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and that, oh, we're good, Department of Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Sharon Strand, Director of Finance and Budget, and I'm here with Beth Richmond, the Deputy Director of Finance and Budget.
Morning.
So, today we're here to talk about a budget adjustment for 108 for the Care First Financial Settlement Refund Background, on October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, staff received the July first, two thousand twenty, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, Care First Financial Settlement. Care First calculates a settlement at the end of each fiscal year, the annual settlement is the difference of monthly payments made to Care First and adjusted to reflect actual claims and other adjustments to include third-party subrogation and prescription rebates. Bolton Partners has reviewed and verified the settlement calculation, given the twenty-eighty premium cost split between county and the participants, twenty percent of the refunded amount is due back to the employees and retirees, while eighty percent is the county's portion of the refund. Discussion, a public hearing is scheduled today for Tuesday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, at ten thirty for the Board of County Commissioners' action to process the necessary budget adjustment to give the employees a benefit holiday for three pays, and the retirees a benefit holiday for the month of December. The budget adjustment also includes two mid-year longevity steps, the first longevity step is for employees who were employed with Calvert County Government as of seven, one, two thousand and nine, and the second longevity step is for employees who were employed as of July first, two thousand and ten, with Calvert County Government. Fiscal impact, the fiscal impact is one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, it's broken down by employees, current employees' benefit holiday for three pays is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, the retiree benefit holiday for the month of December is fifty-six thousand, the FY two thousand and ten mid-year step with benefits is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the FY two thousand and eleven mid-year step with benefits is four hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Following the public hearing, it is recommended that the board take action to close the record, approve the budget adjustment number one oh eight in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, ninety-seven, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and sign the attached resolution.
Commissioners, there is one caller, caller with last four digits, eight four zero zero, if you wish to provide public comment on this hearing, please press star nine. Hearing no response, and there is no one who's signed up for the public hearing, is there anybody who wishes to speak at this public hearing?
So, just as a reference, what we're doing is spending the rebate that we got back from our insurance premium, because our employees did not spend as much in the health care issues as was projected by Care First, so the holiday benefit and the retiree benefit is actually the employee's share that they paid in.
Correct.
They're going to get back through having not to pay an insurance premium for those times, and the steps is, we're using our refund, the part that we got refunded back for air share to cover the two steps that are way behind for our employees.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
So, quick question.
Quick question.
So, does a lot of that have to do with the employees not going to the emergency room and going to the urgent cares instead, is that part of the big savings?
Well, when we looked at the premium analysis with Care First, a lot of it has to do, or a good portion of it, has to do with our change in our prescription plans and our change in the plans that we have made over the years in reducing the costs.
And some of it was because during COVID, elective surgeries and those kinds of things were canceled, and people weren't running to their doctors as they normally would have scheduled, but as Sharon stated, a lot of it is the steps we've, changes we've made over the last few years are starting to show some dividends, so.
Correct.
So, Sharon, and not to get into like the philosophies of, you know, when missteps and lost monies and stuff, because that's, you just, you know, what's lost is lost, you know, will this, anybody who has been employed that did not receive a step during that time, I hate using the word caught up, I'm just, for lack of a better word, if, say I've been here ten years and I should have ten steps, but I'm at eight or whatever, does this finally satisfy all the lost steps, or, and I'm using a bad word here, but I'm trying, you know, trying to get people to where, if there was never any missteps, they would be?
We are missing, we do have one more step that we are behind.
Good morning, Commissioners, Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director, yes, so the employees missed three steps, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, what we are requesting today is two thousand nine, two thousand ten, there is still one step that is missing, and yes, I agree with Sharon, the actuary and the representative from Care First has let us know that the aggressive changes that we've made to our health insurance plans are what is allowing the county to get these types of rebates, so I'm very gracious to the employees for being very good stewards of our health insurance, because the change to Care First, the lack of going to the emergency room, a lot of people went from the PPO to the Advantage Plan, some people even went to the HMO, all of those things, in conjunction with COVID, have led to us getting this four million dollars back from Care First, so I do appreciate your consideration, those last two steps will be very meaningful to a lot of county employees, thank you.
And that would go, Mel, that would go in effect January one?
Correct.
The first pay period in January.
Then that would still have us just one behind of being current from the interruption.
Yes.
Hopefully, next year, we can get that other step caught up and be back on track again.
Yeah, we will definitely look into that as part of the twenty-three budget.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
When I saw that these steps were missed for over a decade, I was very happy to see that budget and finance suggested that we bring these people up to date, and with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to close the record, approve the budget adjustment number one oh eight as submitted, and sign the related resolution.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, next item on the agenda, old business, Department of Public Works. Deputy Director Cosgrove.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jared Cosgrove, Deputy Director of Public Works, here for the Budget Adjustment Number Zero Two Seven CIP Dunley Court Follow-Up Background, on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners held a public hearing to discuss the Department of Public Works' request for a budget adjustment to transfer funds from the Dunley Court Calvert Repair Project adopted in fiscal year twenty-two, capital project, to funds for the road drainage CIP program. Discussion, DPW requests the transfer of three hundred and two thousand dollars from the Dunley Court Calvert Repairs to the road drainage CIP program, the remaining funds from the Dunley Court Calvert Project are actually savings due to the use of better technology for the repairs, which were less invasive than planned, the transfer of the savings to the road drainage piping repairs will enable DPW to further support highway maintenance and reconciling citizens' customer service requests and other infrastructure repairs throughout contract support. Fiscal impact, the FY twenty-two Dunley Court Calvert Repair CIP will decrease by three hundred and two thousand, and the road drainage CIP budget will increase from one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, fifty-one dollars to four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, fifty-one dollars. Conclusion and recommendations, the department has not received any public comment regarding the budget adjustment transfer, the ten-day waiting period has been observed, staff recommends the BOCC close the record and sign the resolution to transfer the three hundred and two thousand from the Dunley Court Calvert Road, or Repair Project to the road drainage program, any questions?
Any questions? Motion?
So, moved.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second that we close the record and adopt budget adjustment zero two seven CIP and sign the related resolution, any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on our old business, Department of Finance and Budget. Next item on our old business, Department of Finance and Budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sharon Strand, Director of Finance and Budget.
And I'm Shashita Warner, Director of School Construction for Calvert County Schools.
Today, we're here to have a letter of support signed by the Commissioners. So the background, the Code of Maryland Regulations, COMAR, establishes a criteria for the calculation of the formula for the state's participation in the eligible cost associated with public school construction. Each fiscal year, a request is made by the Board of Education, BOE, through Finance and Budget to review the upcoming fiscal year's capital, capital construction program request and sign the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction, IAC, Letter of Support. Discussion, the Department of Finance and Budget received the FY 23 Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, requests from the Board of Education, as well as the request of local support for construction projects. The BOE identified the projects below for state and local funding. The BOE listed Priority One as the final funding request of Beach Elementary School replacement. The second and third requests are for Calvert Elementary HVAC and partial roof and Plum Point Middle HVAC, Phase One, has been requested in the previous years, the FY 21 CIP. However, they were deferred by the IAC due to funding constraints. The projects that the BOE has listed as Priorities Four and Five consist of state funding through the Healthy School Facility Fund, or HSFF, with allocated local county share as broken out below. I'm going to go into the fiscal impact and then conclusion, and then I'll let Shashita speak to the specific projects. Fiscal impact, the FY 23 CIP staff recommended budget will increase by $14,024,350, which is about a $3 million increase from what was requested in the FY 22 six-year CIP. The local county share is requested, what is requested is $5,499,850, and the requested share for the state is $8,524,500. The Board of Education's CIP budget always includes both local and state financial support. The local support is funded by Pago, debt, and excise tax, and the state's support is listed under grant/other. Conclusion and recommendation, the staff recommends that the board sign the IAC Letter of Support for the Board of Education's FY 23 Capital Construction Program. So now we'll go into the list of projects, and I'll let Shashita take over here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much. So we've got five priorities listed here. Priority One, the Beach Elementary School project, as you, most of you know, since you attended the groundbreaking, we are underway at this point. So this is the final, the second and final year of funding for that project. That's obviously our first priority because we want to see it continue construction and finish construction. Our second priority is the Calvert Elementary HVAC and partial re-roof. That includes replacement of the equipment, which is original to the building, including, I had noted last year, one unit from 1964, and the roof from the original 1964 portion of the building as well. So that's our second priority. Third priority is full HVAC equipment replacement that's needed at Plum Point Middle School. It's the replacement of 14 air handlers. And then downstream, there are 100 VAV units that need to be replaced. That's, um, a, a, equipment that's original to the 1992 building. So that's going to happen over two summers because it's a fairly large scope project. Priorities Four and Five were originally in our CIP, but we utilized a different grant fund program through the state. It's called Healthy School Facility Fund, and we just received approval from the state on November 18th for those projects. One of them is a roofing project at CTA. This is the original 1970 roof that has not been replaced yet. And then the second is a partial HVAC project at Sunderland to take care of the chiller and then one of the large air handlers. It's a 40-ton unit there. So those have been approved by the state. However, they do require, in order to finalize and go through and actually give us the money that we provide, support for that within this letter of support. So that that concludes our priorities for this year.
Shashita, I know it's not on there, but I just haven't seen you in a while. Is Patuxent High's done, their AC done, gym and all?
Yes, it is 100% done. I would invite you to take a tour and.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, you know, with all the COVID stuff, you know, it kind of, you know, I didn't, you know, didn't have all the events, so, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely our pleasure, yeah. So that that's 100%. The gym has HVAC. In fact, this is kind of a sad.
My daughter's still probably mad at me, but, you know, because she graduated before there was AC, but.
Well, sort of a sad, but but it it ended up being a good thing in the end. The contractor that did the project the second year was the HVAC for the weight room, wrestling room, and the gym to provide air conditioning in that gym, and they had unfortunately a roof leak through one of these terrible storms. And so the the floor ended up getting, you know, retaining moisture, and so they ended up having to refinish that entire gym floor as well. So now, of course, other schools are jealous of that as well, so.
Now, did weight room come out okay? That, that was, oh, good.
Oh, yes.
Good. Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
You heard a lot of complaining from me over the years, so thank you.
That's 100% done.
Yeah, me complaining, I know, right?
You'll find something else, don't worry.
Sharon, if we sign this letter today, we have not approved the 23 CIP yet. By signing and sending this letter, aren't we approving these projects in the 23 CIP?
We would be, and 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 we will be bringing the CIP presentations to you coming forward, but none of these, all these were in last year's CIP as part of the CIP plan.
I understand that, but I also know what the CIP looks like for 23, and I am concerned about preapproving, other than the school, which we already broken ground on, the four other projects that we're going to automatically throw into the CIP before we've been through that process, knowing what it looks like today.
Right.
And the cuts that are going to be needed. So that's my only concern that I want the board to be aware of, because you all have not seen the CIP yet, I don't believe, but I have.
Yes.
And it's not pretty. So for me, I'm just cautioned about adding those four additional projects today.
How time sensitive is this?
Today is the deadline, unfortunately, and I I completely understand, this is a, an issue that we go through every year because obviously you don't adopt your budget, you know, well into next year, and the state requires, in order for them to provide us funding for our CIP, they have this November 30th deadline. It's it's always an issue for us, you know, we have to, so that's why we prepare our CIP in August, we present it to the Board of Ed in September, the Board of Ed reviews it, and then after the 30-day time period, they approve the CIP. It goes up to the state because we have to get our CIP up to the state by Oc, between October 4th and October 9th. And then from that point until November 30th, we have time to make any changes, reprioritize any projects, but they always require this letter of support by that November 30th timeframe. The other pieces that kind of unfortunately add to this as well is that the Healthy School Facility Fund, those particular projects, they have already approved, they require this letter, that's, it it's part of the county's CIP and the Board of Ed's CIP, but for them, they have a requirement that we need to be under contract as far as those projects go by June 30th of this year because of the 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 funding source for the Healthy School Facility Fund. It certainly is a predicament and a quagmire. I will say that for Calvert Elementary School, they did provide limited funding last year for that project as well, so the the remaining funding we would be getting, we would be receiving this year. But yes, it's 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 a catch-22, unfortunately.
And to Mr. President's point, Shashita, conversely, the state has not appropriated this. Is that correct?
So, correct. So they, yes, it's 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 sort of this catch-22 even in that regard as well. So they have approved, because of the Healthy School Facility Fund is not part of their capital improvement program, they've approved our Priorities Four and Five. So they have approved those. However, Priorities One, Two, and Three, obviously they provided funding last year for Beach. They have recommended funding this year, but they won't, they'll take their first vote for the 75% recommendations in December, then the, they'll make recommendations for 90% in February, and then the final CIP budget doesn't, you know, get adopted till May. So yes, you are correct. Many of these, because they end up being multi-year projects, they kind of fall into that same unfortunate, kind of a, a hybrid black hole, if you will, you know, where where you got to keep going, because that's that's unfortunately the nature of of how they they operate, and and our our budget cycles and our approvals just don't line up.
So for item one and two, I mean, we are locked into Beach Elementary. Item two doesn't cost us anything. Thank you.
Correct.
So it's the last three items where we have about 1.3 or 4 million of county funds that are going to be required.
Mm-hmm.
So in state government, you know, there's always language in every contract that says if funds are available.
Correct. And and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shashita, but if 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 Priority Number Three comes back from the IAC saying that it's it's not a viable project, or they're not going to contribute as much as we think we have planned here because of their priorities, we can move this project out.
We could certainly do that, if that were the case.
I mean, I'm just being consistent. You know, I don't like making mid-budget adjustments, and I certainly don't like preapproving anything without going through the process, because that'll get you in trouble, because, so that's my only concern, and that maybe I'm the only one.
Oh, Mr. President, my fear is, and we've had these, you know, CIP is always heated, and everybody's fighting for air. My fear is, you know, this is this one. What is next year? Next year? Next year? And I always preach that. I know we try to project out six years, but, you know, without seeing the whole thing, so I was asking how time sensitive is this? Do we know what the school's request for CIP is going to be?
Yes.
I mean, this, is this everything? So next budget cycle, we won't see another request?
Next budget cycle as in FY 24?
Mm-hmm.
Well, this is the, this is the CIP for 23.
Right.
Right.
But we don't know how large, you know what I mean? Because remember, it's, you know, whenever we go and borrow money, especially if it's something we have to bond, it's 15 years. And so, you know, it's, or seven, seven on some and 15.
15-year and then 25-year on water and sewer.
Yeah, so that's just my concern not to, you know, like, kind of going to what Mr. President said, with with preapproving a project, is all of a sudden 24 going to say, hey, well, you know, we had this because we started this back in 22?
So I will say that the CIP that you saw last year for us, the 22 CIP, where the 23 projects were projected, these have remained the same. The 24 projects, you saw them last year as well, those have remained the same, as have the 25 and the 26. So, you know, because we developed that six-year CIP, we have held to those dollar values in those projects. Now, I, through conversations and and working with Finance and Budget and and Sharon and Veronica, I'm very aware of the limits that are placed upon us as a school system in terms of the money, the the ceiling that we have. And I do everything that I can. If I need to defer a project because we're hitting a ceiling because of price increases due to COVID, I will do that in in every way, shape, and form possible. So right now, as a perfect example, you know, we're seeing, you know, we're we're projecting 10% increases on HVAC equipment from a manufacturer that they've announced for January. We've updated our cost estimates in some cases to escalate up to 30% because of these price increases. So I'm de-scoping projects. I do things like that all the time. So in terms of the bottom line, I know where my bottom line needs to be, and I'll stay within that bottom line, I can promise you that. In terms of of projects, you know, it's it's tough to know back in 22 that we were going to see these types of increases. So, you know, if if anything, the number of projects would lessen, because I I'm fully aware that that, you know, you need to maintain a, 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 a budget. There are other departments, obviously, who have needs, so so that's that's what we try to do. That's that's, you know, honestly, you know, that as frank as I can be, that's that's what we try to do here.
So this is going to happen again next year. It's a normal thing.
Yes.
You're coming to us at the end of November, and you're going to do that for fiscal year '24, too.
Correct.
But we've, we know what the projects are ahead of time, so.
Right.
My my concern is if we don't approve it, that the cost is just going to continue to go up.
I would say so. Certainly, you know, during the summer, it was when we started noticing price increases in April, part of me thought, well, you know, maybe prices will begin to level off in December. But at this point in time, we know that for the next year, material shortages, price increases, there is not really an end in sight that we see.
While I don't disagree that these projects need to be accomplished, the Board of Education still continues to refuse to listen to more than 10 parents per meeting, 10 public comments per meeting. We as a board unanimously asked them face-to-face, in person, a few months ago, please reconsider. Please listen to your public. Please listen to your constituents, the people, the parents in this community. There was a motion made that day, and it was seconded and it failed, to eliminate that 10-person limit. Last month, we as the Commissioners passed an ordinance in the county that says we and all of the committees we're associated with have to listen to our constituents and our committee and our people that come to the committees, and we have to take public hearing. I asked last week if it was still, or two weeks ago, if that was still the case, if there was still a 10-person limit. I was told yes, there is by the school board. We additionally unanimously passed a resolution in writing asking the school board to listen to more than 10 people per month. They continuously, this Board of Ed continuously comes back, every single time a motion is made, every single time it's seconded, the motion fails by one vote. With that being said, my vote on this will be no based on principle, because the Board of Ed refuses to listen to more than 10 people per meeting, based on that only. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we sign the IAC Letter of Support for the BOE's FY 23 Capital Construction Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we approve and adopt and assign, I'm sorry, the IAC Letter of Support for the BOE's 23 Capital Construction Program.
Oh, Mr. President, so.
Discussion?
Yes, sir. And I don't disagree with Commissioner Gadway at all. I, and we've said it a million times, and, and I, it's, it's a public service job. And I know you're the messenger today, Shashida, so it's a public service job. If you, if you don't wanna hear from the public, don't sign up. I mean, it's just really that simple. My fear is creating harm to projects that, I, I do believe, and I'm a little bit of an optimist, and I deal with the supply chain stuff daily. I think in two years, we're gonna see it cycle back. I do think the next two years are gonna be very difficult. I don't know if a project can hold two years. I don't know what the logjam will be once things start freeing up as well. I think it's gonna be a mess that we're gonna feel for years, even once the relief comes. I also agree with Mr. President's apprehension with, you know, basically approving money ahead of, you know, the next budget. I don't like that process. I understand that's when in place, maybe there's some way we can kinda mitigate that to get a little bit more than, hey, it's the 11th hour, make the decision today, or screw up, you know, tomorrow. I mean, it would be nice to have at least, maybe a, a month ahead of time to work session it a little bit, to at least have a little bit to where this falls in place. You kinda feel like, that you're pressured to make a decision of, of, with, with some unknown factors. So I don't like that. But with that said, I don't want to, I mean, two projects already in place. So.
Uh, Mr. President, so in my opinion, politicians can be hard-headed at times. And although I don't agree with the 10 comment thing, we've expressed that to the Board of Ed, but I won't make decisions based on that that will affect the children in the community. And these projects are for the children. So that's, that's where I stand with that. They, they, the Board of Ed knows how we feel about the, the 10 comments, and we've expressed that to them. And so that's, that's, that's my two cents.
Well, I guess the only thing I can say is that at the end of the day, if we approve the '23 CIP and those projects are not included, we would just notify the state. Even though we send a letter today saying we support them. So we always have an opportunity to pull back.
That I'm unsure of.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
In fact, the letter is written supporting the application for the state, request for the state funding.
Right.
It's not promising the county funding.
Right, cause I understand the state process, they, they need to know what's requested now, cause they're building a budget just like we are.
Correct.
So they can't wait until we finalize our CIP. I, I get that part of it. Just wanna make sure everybody's aware of, decisions we make today can impact tomorrow, so. But at the end of the day, if we don't approve these, these projects in the final CIP, we just notify the state that we withdraw those, so we have an opportunity to. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda under Presentations, Department of Planning and Zoning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is my first time up here, it's great to meet you all. My name's DeCarlo Brown, Planner 3 with the Department of Planning and Zoning. And it is my honor this morning to introduce Dr. Laura Harris and Dr. Jeremy Pesta with the Chesapeake Biological Laboratory. This morning, they're gonna be presenting on the Non-Tidal Nutrient and Sediment Monitoring Program Review. The doctors here conducted a review of the water quality monitoring program for the non-tidal creeks in Calvert County. They assessed the non-tidal monitoring program, analyzed data collected since 2010, and recommend changes to and document the monitoring program. They first, they have made a presentation for, to share for you all today, and they will be doing so now, so.
Thank you, DeCarlo. Um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, happy Thanksgiving, post Thanksgiving. It's always a pleasure to come here and, and see the business of the county. That's a, a great thing for me to see local governments and to switch gears from aging and schools and all these important people things, to think about our streams. Next slide. So this is a quote from Luna Leopold, who is the son of Aldo Leopold. He's one of kind of the grandfathers of conservation in our country. He made his name around the Dust Bowl in communication with Americans about needs of preserving and conserving the environment. And his son, Luna, focused on hydrology. So you can imagine after the Dust Bowl, thinking about water was probably on your mind. And so this, this quote, I think, gives you a sense of what we like to think about as coastal ecologists, about how coastal watersheds, which all, all of Calvert County is coastal watersheds, all of the water that falls on the county eventually makes its way either into the Patuxent or the Chesapeake Bay. And we have this kinda unique perspective on what streams do to connect that land to the receiving waters of the bay that so many of our residents care about. Next slide, please. And so this is just a little image to remind you or, or help you understand how streams work. When water falls on a drainage basin, it can travel over the land, but most of it filters through the soils into the groundwater. And streams end up being lower places in the landscape where that groundwater essentially comes up to the surface. So things that get into streams can happen because of what falls on the land, and also what happens under the land, especially in septic systems that we have in so many parts of Calvert County. And so when we think about that quote from Leopold about the gutters, I hope you have this in your mind of just how the land is so connected to streams, and how water under the land from far away is still connected to those streams. Next slide. And in Maryland, streams are really everywhere. This map is a blue line map of all of the streams in the state of Maryland. There's a lot of different stream types. We have the Piedmonts, which you might go out to Western Maryland where there's rocks, and you can go trout fishing. And then we have our highly erodible sandy soils here in Calvert County in the coastal plain. And they are the primary connection between the uplands and the Chesapeake Bay. So that's really, really important. The thing to think about, this is a, a quote from Walter Boynton. He likes to think about Cooperstown, New York, and if you had a molecule of a pollutant like nitrogen that was put into a stream in Cooperstown, New York, it would take about four days for that molecule of nitrogen to make its way to the Chesapeake Bay. That's pretty fast, if you think about it. So, so we do have these kind of, of connection points between the entire watershed of the Chesapeake and the estuaries that we care so much about. Next slide. So way back when, I think in about 2008, Dave Brownlee and Steve Cullen and the Environmental Planning Group here in Calvert County started up a non-tidal stream monitoring program. So they located places all over Calvert County, over 26 sites, that they could go and collect water samples and take other measurements, and get a handle on what pollution was coming out of those streams. And the main things they focused on were the pollutants that we care about for the Chesapeake Bay, total maximum daily load, and the watershed implementation plans, the whips, that you guys all have to think about for the state and for the regulatory framework we have under the Clean Water Act. And so they measured phosphorus, nitrogen, and total suspended solids, which is just a fancy word for basically dirt. And then we also measured stream discharge. So how fast is the water flowing in those streams? Because that really gives you a sense of the load, the total amount of pollutant that's coming out. And so for this project, we took that whole database and cleaned it up. It hadn't really been, they, they collected the data, but it had been hard to get it in a point where you could understand it and interpret it. And so Jeremy and I, and our technician Mindy Forsyth, and then an RU student Hector Arbuckle also worked on the data to help provide you all with a story, and importantly, to provide the planning department, especially Mr. Brown, with tools for going after potential restoration grants for the county. Next slide. So you'll see in the map here, those red dots are all of the locations where the data were collected. We looked at the data over time, so from that 2008 up through to when the monitoring program was started. We compared the stations with one another. And then we also used the Chesapeake Bay Program's watershed model. So this is the model that the Bay Program uses to set all of the regulatory targets for you all. And we used that and downscaled it to the, the drainage basins where these measurements were taken to get a sense of how the Bay Program model compared with the data that you all were actually collecting. So this is kind of a way to, to see how the model does, and whether the measurements match, what the predictions are. There's models, and then there's reality, and we need to make sure we, we check on both of them. Next step, next slide, please. And so this is not something to look at in detail. This is kinda like the cheat summary sheet that Mr. Brown and his group can use. There's a summary sheet like this for each of the stations where, where the county took those measurements for all of those years. And it's kind of like a detailed report card. And this is the kind of data that most restoration grants require before you can request restoration grants. So this is amazing baseline data that the county has. So you, you know how that stream has operated for this whole timeline. You can apply for restoration funds, whether it's for riparian buffers, or for stabilization, or for septic system improvements. And then you, if you go back and measure afterwards, you'll be able to compare before the restoration and after. And that's a very frequent requirement for many of the foundation grants you can go after in the state grants. And so this is kind of giving you just the temperature of all of these sites. Next slide. But we wanted to kinda give you a, a, a introduction to some of those data without going to all of the detail. And we're gonna do that for all of the different pollutants that the county measured. So this is the first pollutant, NH4, it's ammonia. It's a flavor of nitrogen. So if you can kinda think of nitrogen as Jolly Ranchers, this is like the blue Jolly Rancher. And we have this color-coded table, red is bad, green is good. And you can see for this pollutant, the North Beach site had the highest values. So this is, we looked at that whole data set, and we took median values, so we did some statistics on it. And we compared it with all of the other stations, and the red ones were above what most of the county numbers look like. And the really hot red ones were much, much higher. So they're kind of a alert for you all of these are not great stream sites for this analyte. Next slide. Yeah, next slide. We also found that there were fairly low yields overall. So even though that ammonium value was high at North Beach, in general, ammonium is low in Calvert County streams compared with if we looked at Maryland at large. Next slide. Okay, this is the analyte NO23 nitrate nitrite. This is, you know, think of this as the red Jolly Rancher, still nitrogen, but a different flavor. It is also very high at the North Beach Stream Site, along with sites in Hunting Creek, the King Creek Site, and the Smith 7 Site. It is also low at seven of the 26 stations. And nitrate nitrite, we tend to worry about more. There's actually a drinking water standard for this analyte. And it's a much more common form of nitrogen in streams that we worry about, worry about for total loads to the Chesapeake Bay. Next slide. I wanted to circle the stations so you can kinda get a sense, and maybe you're starting to see a picture in your mind, that a lot of these red circles where the stations are located in the county tend to be to the north. So that's another pattern to just have an eye on with the maps, is all those red circles are, are in the northern or middle part of the county so far. Next slide. This is the analyte for phosphorus, PO4. And that's the third column of the table, and you can see that it's very high at three of the 26 stream stations, Helen Creek, Lion, and North Beach again. Maybe you're seeing a pattern with North Beach Stream Site. It's also low at several stations, Gray 1 and 2, the Mill Creek Station, Smith 7, St. Leonard 2, and the TYVE Station. And so that's really a, an important thing to know if we can click and see the map. One more slide. You can see those green circles in the lower part of Calvert County, and this was a little bit of a surprise to us. We actually anticipated that stream pollutant, pollution would be worse in the Mill Creek watershed in particular. And so that is actually really good for the county that we'd love for you to think about. There's been a lot of investments of Bay Restoration Septic Upgrades in that part of Calvert County. And it would be great to be able to connect the dots between this really good data for those sites that you're seeing. And I'll show you a little data from the modeling in a minute that also may suggest that that investment that has happened has really made a difference. Next slide. And then the last analyte that was measured, the total suspended solids, this is all of the dirt that's coming out of Calvert County. There's a lot more red here. This is something to maybe not take quite as personally. There's a lot of things that happen in the watershed that can be mitigated, that can be helped around sediment. We also are just in a bad situation in Calvert County in general. We kinda drew the, the bad card around erodible soils. And so it's something we're gonna have to work harder at than some other counties. It's a really important pollutant because it clouds out the water and gets rid of seagrasses, submerged aquatic vegetation. So it's something we really have to pay attention to, but it's, it's something that is harder to deal with in Calvert County. And it's very high, again, you see North Beach, one there again, also Helen Rams and TYVE. But there are many other stations where it's actually quite good. So that's another thing to pay attention to. And if we click the slide again, you'll see the map of where those red and green stations are. So again, more red circles towards the upper part of the county and the middle part of the county. Next slide. So some take homes from this kind of snapshot of the data. Unfortunately, there are no all-green sites. So there's no one stream that's doing good for all of the pollutants. So that's something that I think we should pay attention to. Next slide. Fishing Creek, that's that North Beach one site, is all dark red for all pollutants. So if I were you all, that would be a drainage basin I would take a really good look at to see if there's something we can do in terms of investments for restoration. Next slide. Helen and Gray H1 are also all red. They aren't all that hot red, but there's some pinks in there, and so those would also be drainage basins of concern. Next slide. Several of this, these stations are in the Hall Creek watershed, the larger basin. And so that is also something to think about of maybe, you know, there could be a focus of a restoration effort in the Hall Creek watershed that might be, you know, big, big bang for your buck in terms of improvements. Next slide. And there's a lot of stations that are mixed with this red and yellow. And those require a little bit more nuanced eye that Mr. Brown and the Environmental Planning Group could take a look at with those more detailed summary sheets we offered. Next slide. There's also some good news. Those are some of the, the good stations, Plum Creek, St. Leonard 2. St. Leonard is one of my favorite little mini creeks in, in the county, and that watershed is pretty remarkable. So there's some good news too for some of the data. Next slide. So again, you know, this would just be an example of how we could see the planning department using what we did for the analysis. They could go to that St. Leonard Creek 2 site, and you see all those scattershot dot plots on the right. And the second one down, there's this green line that's really, really low. And that's telling you, wow, this is a great site, maybe we don't make investments here. Versus the Smith 7A scatter plot, if you look the second down, that green line is much higher for nitrate nitrite. Okay, here would be a better site for us to look at stormwater retention ponds, or riparian buffers, or agricultural mitigation efforts. Next slide. We also just wanted to look at how land use impacted this, and whether Calvert County is like the rest of the world. And unfortunately, Calvert County is like the rest of the world. When you have a lot of developed land use, next slide, you tend to have higher values. So there's kind of this, this rule of thumb in watershed science that when you develop more than 40% of the watershed, things fall apart a little bit. And so that's what that dotted line is. You might wanna do another click on the slide. Oh, no, sorry, go back. Oh, no, sorry, go back. So everything to the right of that for the top graph is nitrogen, and that tells us, unfortunately, just like everywhere else, we want to keep an eye on how much of the watershed is developed. We did not see that so much for agriculture in Calvert County, and that is probably because of the way that our soils work. So that's just something to keep in mind. Percent developed is generally how we would expect it to be. Agriculture, it's not quite as clear. Next slide. These are the downscaled Chesapeake Bay Program Model data, and I'm not expecting you to really digest this in a lot of detail. They're all arranged from the lowest to the highest loads per acre of the drainage basin. Next slide. And what I wanted to point out with this is these are two of the watersheds that are in the Chesapeake Bay Ranch Estates down in the southern part of the county, and they end up with the higher yield. So this is like the amount of nitrogen per meter squared of drainage basin that's coming out into the stream, and those two end up looking pretty bad by the Bay Program Model standpoint. Next slide. And if we look at these other, if we look at where that nitrogen is coming from, we can see that a lot of it is coming from percent septic. So focus your eyes on the far right side of the graph where those two watersheds are, Mill and Gray, and see all that purple is from the septics. Next slide. And so the big thing to know about that is those are sites that were actually doing good for water quality, and it is where you all have invested the Bay Restoration Funds for advanced septic systems. And this to me is really good news that if the county can put those investments in place, we can kind of buck the trend of what the Bay Model would predict because we're changing how those septic systems function and we're removing nitrogen out of the system. And so I hope that that's encouraging news for all of you, that this effort that the county did for so many years is telling you that your actions are having, making a difference. There are also some places we can now focus on that could use some improvement. That North Beach Fishing Creek Site and thinking about Hall Creek would especially be places that we would recommend the planning department and you all think about. I think this is my last slide. Next slide. So these are just some general takeaways from this. The planning department has these great fact sheets. We're here to support them and how they might use them or go after funding to do more restoration efforts. And the Chesapeake Biological Lab is always happy to serve in advisory capacity for the county. These are really good baseline measurements, and that's what's needed for a lot of those restoration dollars. They want you to be able to prove that the restoration has made a difference. And the county was very forward-thinking and realizing, let's collect those data now so we are competitive for those grants. And we would recommend that especially if you want to go after those restoration funds, that starting up the monitoring program again and thinking about how that could be used to document improvements wouldn't be a bad idea. We do recommend a reduced number of sampling stations, and we're working with DeCarlo and his group to talk about that and think about that. And we also just hope that you'll be able to see pretty clearly through this brief presentation how we can pick out where the bad and the good sites are and hopefully provide you with some actionable science for making decisions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So at some point, we will have a proposal for the next monitoring program?
If that's something that the commissioners are interested in, I think that we are talking with DeCarlo about that, and I think it could be really good for you all to keep thinking about that, for sure.
And that's actually why we're here today, to get some direction of where you all would like us to go with this program. To give some context, this review was actually done with the funds, the last of grant funds from the last monitoring program. And so with this, that grant is, has been completed. And so now we need some direction on, should we be looking for more grant funds? Are you all looking to fund this work? Is this something that you're interested in? Some direction, and then we'll make it happen.
Well, it was nice to hear something positive on Mill Creek. You know, year after year after year, you know, it just breaks my heart when I see a lot of these reports come back. I know we're a long way to go, but it is encouraging to hear that these systems are working. They're not cheap, they're not easy, it is a lot on the homeowner. But, you know, positive results are what the goal is. So I was very happy to hear that. It's nice to hear something positive about the creeks and everything.
If we don't monitor, we won't know that.
Yeah, that's the thing with the monitoring is it's hard to be able to know, and I hope that this is something, we'd be happy to work on kind of a public sheet that could go out with the septic system applications, you know, talking about how impactful these homeowner actions.
Yeah, they don't know.
Yeah.
I talk to people all the time. I'm like, look, you really need to talk to the health department and understand what you think you're going to be able to do out there because, you know, this is a long time coming and, yeah, there's a lot of people just, they think, hey, they buy a house and just gonna do whatever, and that's not the case, and this is why. So that information's very valuable.
And the other thing that Jeremy and I both work on is how do we detect the change in the data? Because, you know, there's a lot of variability year to year. Those numbers go up and down, up and down, up and down. And so the other thing that I would really recommend is that investments that are focused in a spatial area, you're more likely to be able to see and measure the difference than if we just do a scattershot approach. So that's the other element of this is, you know, maybe there's the potential to go watershed by watershed and focus some of the investments, you know, or to have some kind of a needs, you know, a planning effort to figure out how long would it take with the current septic policies to be able to kind of hit a threshold of change that would be measurable? Because the, right now, the policies you have, my husband's an architect, I hear all the time from him how strict they are, you know, so I know that that's happening, but it would be really helpful to know what the timeline of that would look like with the current policies in place as well. But again, as you say, President Hans, it's hard to be able to know whether it will work unless we're monitoring and measuring it.
So I don't think there'd be any objection from the board for a proposal, how we move forward. And as always, if there's grants available to cover that, that's always welcomed. But if we don't monitor, we don't want to know whether what we're doing is good or bad. Like you say, if we can prove that the things we're doing are effective, it helps to sell that to the community that, you know, we're going in the right direction, so.
Great.
I think.
Thank you.
I think that's a good strategy. Did you need any other direction today?
No, those are my marching orders, so I'll get that.
Thank you. It's always, you know, CBL's been a great partner in Calvert County, and we look forward to continuing that partnership in the future. It's a great asset to have here in the county.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Department of Economic Development.
Morning Commissioners. I'm Danita Boonchisi, Acting Director of the Department of Economic Development. I'm going to tee up a presentation you're about to hear from the University System of Maryland at Southern Maryland or USMSM. Background: USMSM's new Southern Maryland Autonomous Research and Technology, or SMART, building is an $86 million, 84,000 square foot academic and research facility which has become transformative for USMSM and Southern Maryland. This new facility is expected to become a catalyst for economic activity and job growth in the region. In state-of-the-art classrooms, students from across Southern Maryland now have enhanced access to in-demand educational programs, including those needed for completion of bachelor's degrees, giving these students the opportunity to live, work, and study close to home. The SMART Building features an autonomous technologies research facility which includes underwater, air, and land testing capabilities that will be used by startups, engineers, and researchers. There's no fiscal impact to this presentation today, and you're going to receive a brief overview and watch a short video that details USMSM's programs and services along with an introduction of the SMART Building and the technology it houses. Presenters will be, to my left, Joe Anderson, Chair of USMSM's Board of Advisors. Some of you may know Mr. Anderson. Eileen Abel, USMSM Executive Director, and Matt Scassero, Director for Research, Innovation, and Outreach, A. James Clark School of Engineering, University of Maryland. So Joe, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning Commissioners. Commissioner President Hans, it's very good to see you again, as it is to see all of you Commissioners. Feels like old home week with Attorney Norris in the back there and Wilson Perrin, one of our former Board of Governors members in the audience. We very much appreciate the opportunity to provide you with this brief presentation. I think you'll be excited about the opportunities that our merger, the Southern Maryland Higher Education Center merger with University Systems of Maryland, I think you'll be excited about how, what the potential is for Southern Maryland as a result of these, you know, events. I'd also like to thank the Calvert County Commissioners and Calvert County for your past financial assistance to the Higher Education Center. Every year you've provided us with a small grant that has been very, very helpful throughout the years, and I don't think there's been a year that you've missed it in over 20 years. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Dr. Eileen Abel, our Executive Director. She's been on board for just about a year and has done an amazing job for us. And then you'll hear from Matt Scassero, who's the University of Maryland's new Director of Research, Innovation, and Outreach. So I think to begin with, we're going to see a short video that provides an overview. We had this prepared before our grand opening of the SMART Building several weeks ago.
The SMART Building is the physical manifestation of the investment that the system, the state, and the community have made in the young people in Southern Maryland. What SMART's going to be able to offer are high-demand, high-wage career opportunities for students with access to new technologies, building the workforce tomorrow, and affording that in our own backyard with world-class education, world-class researchers, and the opportunity to collaborate with industry and the Department of Defense.
This building is important to the people of Southern Maryland. It represents this region, placing a cornerstone for building a new world of transformative and inclusive opportunities for the people in our region.
What's unique about this particular regional higher ed center, USMSM, is that we're going to be blending research and education and opportunities for growth, which I think will be transformative for the students and for the communities that we serve.
The SMART Building is really key to the Arrow Park because, as we've known for some time, the key to economic growth is three things: research, education, and investment. The Arrow Park is really central to that theme of economic diversification. The now addition of the SMART Building really embodies all three of those pieces all in one building. It brings together the researchers, the educators, and the students that are going to be the workforce of the future. Having that all happen in one place is just magical.
It will house very unique laboratories for research that we don't even have up here at College Park. There's a water tank in that facility that we don't have here at College Park. There's an electromagnetic facility that we don't have. So now it forces our academic talent as well as government and corporate talent to show up to this one unique node to do the kind of research to advance the state-of-the-art, number one, but also to hopefully lead to new innovation that will potentially maybe lead to new opportunities in startups in the future. So I see it as a hub for excellence and a hub for opportunities in the region, and beyond that, it also will be an academic center for the entire region as well.
I decided to pursue my electrical engineering degree at USMSM because it allowed me to stay near my support network, and I think that's really important in gaining all I have as a student. With the opportunities from the SMART Building with the labs and research projects, I see all that applied knowledge being carried forward into my career, and I also see opportunities in furthering my education and going for my master's or possibly further.
One of my goals here at the center is to be able to create flexible learning opportunities for students where we can offer high flex and hybrid models with really high-end technologies and give people access to the education that they need close to home.
So the research function that will happen inside of the SMART Building and in the Matrix Labs specifically, mainly centered around autonomous technologies, unbanned systems, artificial intelligence, machine learning. Those are really key to our future because those are the central building blocks of where we go with technology in the future.
What excites me the most about the SMART Building and the opportunities with the research and the labs is taking all my classroom knowledge and transferring it into something physical, which I think every engineering student really wants to do.
Very good. And Commissioners, before Dr. Abel proceeds, I'd just like to acknowledge Kathy Maney too. She represents Calvert County on our Board of Advisors now and helped us set up this meeting.
Good, thank you.
Commissioners, good morning. Thank you so much for entertaining our presentation this morning. Some of you may know me in my former role. I was Vice President of Academic Affairs at the College of Southern Maryland. And actually, my first anniversary at USMSM is tomorrow, December 1st. I stepped in there last year. I'm sort of in the middle still of managing COVID. It's a wonderful opportunity for Maryland to establish, support, and encourage the pipeline for the education and the workforce that we need here in this region. And even though the Regional Higher Ed Center is located in St. Mary's County, it supports the entire region. Just so you know, in 2021, we actually supported over 1,000 Calvert County students in the programs that are run through the center. Doesn't necessarily mean that those are students who will graduate. They may transfer to other institutions, but the classes that we offer down through the center did support over 1,000 Calvert County students. What that also means is that your $25,000 grant that you give us every year is in support of those students down in the center, and we thank you sincerely for that. So as Joe mentioned, we actually came under the auspices of the University System of Maryland in 2019. Chancellor Jay Perman actually has given us an expanded mission. One is to grow bachelor's completion programs, particularly with works-based opportunities, and then also to expand the research efforts through the University of Maryland Clark School of Engineering. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the development of the workforce programs, and Matt Scassero will speak in just a minute about the expanded research mission. If you could go to the next slide, please. We have eight partner institutions that offer bachelor's completion programs, masters, and PhD programs to meet the workforce needs in the area. Our feeder institution is the College of Southern Maryland. I happen to have an in with them, which is really quite nice. But what we're really trying to do is to focus on meeting the workforce needs in the area. So we are unlike a campus or a college where we offer multiple programs. We actually only offer programs that meet the workforce needs in this area, and our partner institutions are the ones who are offering those classes. As you can imagine, we've had challenges with enrollment over the last couple of years with the COVID, but our goal is to grow programs, again, that we know are in high demand in the area. One of the things that we also know about the demographics in Southern Maryland is we only have about an 18% bachelor's completion rate. What we need is to have an over 30% bachelor's completion rate because so many of the jobs that are in high demand require a bachelor's degree as entry level. What we also know right now is that higher education is quite expensive. People opt not to go to finish after they've gone to CSM or to go to college at all because it costs a lot of money to live in a dorm or to pay tuition. So part of my mission is to find scholarships, monies, and work-based opportunities to offset the cost of tuition. Again, students can live close to home, not have to pay room and board at the institutions, and to lead directly into a career. So my marketing goal is 30 by 30, 30% people bachelor completion down here by 2030 to meet the workforce demands, which I'll talk about here in just a second. So, next slide, please. So this is a little bit dense here, but I do want to mention that in the highlighted areas, you can see where there's incredibly high demand. So these are actually just the workforce demand from 2020 to 2030 that will require at least 250 or more jobs over the next 10 years. So my goal is to create pipeline programs through the public schools, to the College of Southern Maryland, to our partner institutions, to actually meet the needs of this area. I included Anarundel County in this because a lot of people who are working in Calvert County actually do commute to Anarundel to work. And so when I'm looking at the labor market data, I include the southern part of Anarundel and sometimes Prince George's County. There's, when you look at the outcommuting patterns, there's less outcommuting from Calvert County to Prince George's than there is up to Anarundel. So what this means is that you can see that operations and management is incredibly high need. Software development, off-the-charts high need. You can also see that we have great demand for all sorts of teachers and for nurses as well. We offer teaching programs. We're trying to create the pipeline through the public schools. Our superintendents are represented on our Board of Advisors, and they're all screaming to have additional teacher preparation. You can also see, and I don't think this is any surprise, that there's a great demand for a nursing program. I'm working right now with the CEOs of our three regional hospitals to work on an accelerated program. I'm working right now with the CEOs of our three regional hospitals to work on an accelerated RN to BSN program that is work-based and that is accelerated, that will bring students in, complete a BSN within 18 months. So my goal, as I said, is to work with the pipeline to ensure the growth and support for the students who are coming into these programs to meet the workforce needs in the area, which again includes primarily Charles, Calvert, and St. Mary's County, but also areas up around Anarundel and parts of Prince George's. So we appreciate your continued support. I think it's a real exciting time for us. It's a great opportunity, I think, for the Regional Higher Ed Center to expand the mission and really support the communities that it does serve. So with that said, I'm going to pass it on to Matt Scassero, who's the Director of Research Innovation and Outreach at, at US MSM. I call him Dr. Drone.
Among other things. So I'm really excited about moving into my new position, the Director of Research Innovation and Outreach from the Clark School at US MSM. If you would go to the next slide, please. As Dr. Abel mentioned, Chancellor Perman's direction was not only the education side, but also to create this new research mission. So the research portion of this is new for a regional education center, and it's building on the success of what we've done with the UAS test site at the airport, which is about 200 yards down the road from the new building at the campus there. So we're looking to build on this success, building this research part focused on not only air, but also ground, surface, and subsurface autonomous technologies across all domains. So artificial intelligence, machine learning, all the sensor work with all of our partners. If you'd go to the next slide, please. This new building, the Southern Round Autonomous Research and Technologies Building, the Smart Building, is focused on the education and also on the research. And the whole goal here is to really dovetail the two of those together. The real focus is on the students to create the workforce of the future and also our research partners. And as you can see on the slide, many of our research partners actually helped design the building. The Navy was actually part and parcel to designing the building, and they created some very unique pieces such as the Anna Quaid Chamber that you saw in the video there. One of our other regional partners down here is very important to us and is growing stronger year by year, is the Chesapeake Bay Lab in UMCES, at the Chesapeake Bay Lab, Dr. Tom Miller, because of the vast amount of research that's being done with underwater unmanned vehicles and unmanned surface vessels. So we have several grant proposals coming together in that area. The programming is getting started in January. We just got furniture in last week, so it's a very exciting time to be part of this building. Next slide, please. So as then my boss Dean Pines, now President Pines, said, the goal here was to get unique facilities and buffer facilities. Some of the things we put in here, we actually have a lot of on base that are scheduled out two and three years in advance, and nobody can get into them. So we built additional capability in this building, but we also have very unique facilities that fluid dynamics tank. The box you see in the lower left there is an 80-foot by 60-foot by 40-foot open-air lab inside that is RF sealed. You can do anything you want inside. Nothing gets in, nothing gets out. So none of, nothing like that exists anywhere down in this region. The next nearest facilities will be up in Northern Maryland at some of the other federal labs. So it gives you some real unique capabilities there. Next slide, please. It really gets down to the bottom line. Why do you care? It's jobs, it's workforce, it's developing the workforce of the future and giving our local students local opportunities to develop into that workforce. And it takes us three things I mentioned in the video: research, investment, and education. The great thing is we have a lot of those pieces already here. We've now started to pull them together. At the airport, at St. Mary's County Airport, we actually have created the Arrow Park Innovation District, which is the newest member of the Association of University Research Parks in the United States. So we're actually looking to create a university research park. So we're pulling together all these pieces to create this. Next slide, please. And as far back as when I was still in uniform on base back before 2009, one of my big focal points was to attract University System of Maryland and University of Maryland assets and capabilities down here to the settlement area region. The great news is it's coming true. You can see by the map of Maryland here, all of the identities of the regions of Maryland are really defined by the partnerships, the federal labs, the industry, and especially the University System of Maryland assets in each region of the state. With the addition of this new research capability down here, this really makes us the anchor of that new autonomy corridor. We've had the biotechnology and cybersecurity corridors. We've now created the autonomy corridor that runs from Aberdeen up north of Baltimore all the way down through College Park, Indian Head, Dahlgren, and Wallops off to the east and the west, and now down into Southern Round with Indian Head, then Pax River, and now this new facility. And that really gives it the identity of the autonomy corridor that we can lead the nation in partnership with our federal labs. Next slide, please. And last slide, this is very much a regional approach. We're looking to create this opportunity for all the students, the industries that we have down here, and our community partners in general, working with our education partners. And it's a tremendous opportunity that we bring this education and research together for the future of our students. And with that, we'll be open for any questions and discussion.
And Commissioners, just wanted to add one thing.
Sure.
First of all, you know, the hard work of the people in, in Southern Maryland, the Boards of County Commissioners who supported our efforts throughout the merger and the acquisition of this building was very, very important because this was, we were the only section, part of the state, the only region in the state that didn't have USM, you know, buying in. They are bought into us in a big way now. We have a very, very strong commitment. And I think Eileen alluded to it, but I wanted to emphasize the fact that we have a new goal at US MSM, and that is to provide the opportunity for those people in our community who may have never dreamt they would have an opportunity to go to college or finish their, or finish their degree, you know, or gave up after two years or one year. We're going, we hope, we, we, our goal is to make equity in education very, very important. You know, it's a critical thing because education leads to economic freedom and diversity. You can't have one without the other. So over the next few years, and I mean, this is going to be a generational effort. It's not going to happen overnight, but we have, we're laying the groundwork now with your help, Charles County and St. Mary's County, to provide a resource for available and accessible workforce-relevant education in our community for everyone. So with that, we'd like to entertain any questions you might have or comments.
So what's the capacity at the school?
So with the addition of the, so we have, well, almost unlimited. So with it, with the addition of 16 high-tech classrooms in the Smart Building, we have over 40 classrooms. And what we're trying to do right now is to work on financing some technology upgrades in the original two buildings so that we can also create more hybrid opportunities. Since that tends to be right now, particularly in the era of COVID, it, it allows the opportunities, again, for students to be able to come in or to be able to pipe in from home, or for us to be able to pipe in from our partner institutions if we can't get somebody locally to teach those classes. So again, we have over 40 classrooms. All of the 16 in the Smart Building are, they're Zoom-ready, and who knew that was going to be a word, right?
I'd just like to compliment you guys. I was down there on October 15th for the grand opening, and it was really, it, it was beyond amazing to see the facility and the, what do you guys call the, the back room where the, the big elephant doors, where all the cameras are?
Open air lab.
The what?
Open air lab.
Incredible seeing that stuff and the tie-downs to where you can have the different testing and the experiments, more cameras in there than I've ever seen. And I really appreciated the water being, the bottled water being delivered by the robots. So, thank you. It was a lot of fun.
Thank you.
And compliments on the building.
Well, we'd also like to offer a tour of the building for you all and any of your staff that you think would be interested. We want as many people as possible to know what the possibilities are, you know, and we, we really believe that in time, this is going to transform our region.
One of the very specific outreach things I'll be doing as part of my new position will be reaching out to your schools to have groups come over, see the facilities, and actually see their future in this kind of technology and this kind of education and the other educational programs that are offered at US MSM.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, we're just so blessed to have the facility here in Southern Maryland, so as our students can, as you say, get an education that they might not have been able to afford otherwise. Everybody can't afford to travel to a school and dorm rates being what they are and meal plans and all those other associated costs. So now they don't have that burden to worry about, and it's a state-of-the-art facility, and we look forward to it.
And adults as well, Commissioner.
For us old people too.
Absolutely. Never too late.
Never too old.
Teach you how to use a QR code.
Maybe, maybe.
Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe, and I can move there. Next item on the agenda is a work session, Department of Public Works. Is this that dry document you were talking about earlier?
Very dry, 44 dry pages.
Well, we want it dry when we're talking about stormwater, right?
Right, exactly. So it's our already a win.
Good morning again, Commissioners. J.R. Cosgrove, Deputy Director of Public Works. I have with me Kevin Shaver, one of our project engineers. I'm gonna go over the, we're here for the modification of the Calvert County Stormwater Management Ordinance. I'll read over the memo real quick. Calvert County was granted the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Municipal Separated Storm Sewer System, better known as the MS4 permit, back in October 31st, 2018. The MS4 permit requires Calvert County to meet six minimum control measures, or as we call them, MCMs. That includes public education and outreach, public involvement and presentation, the illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, and post-construction runoff control, and pollutant prevention, and good housekeeping for municipal operations. So as part of the, the IDDE MCM, the county was, must adopt an ordinance that allows for the screening, testing, correcting, and finding of illicit discharge into the storm drain systems. As a discussion, attached, or attached in your, your packet was a draft IDDE ordinance for consideration for the BOCC. If the BOCC chooses to move forward with the ordinance, public hearing will be held to amend the existing stormwater management ordinance. Physical impact, there's none. Conclusions, staff, a request of BOCC approve the draft IDDE ordinance section of the Stormwater Management Ordinance, as written and allows for a public hearing to be held on December 14th. At this time, I'll turn it over to my project engineer, Kevin, to go over our presentation.
Okay. Good morning.
Next slide.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Shaver. I am a project engineer in the Department of Public Works, Capital Projects Division. This morning, I am here to present some of the key points of the proposed illicit discharge detection and elimination section to be added to the existing stormwater management ordinance. Next slide. Calvert County was issued a municipal separate storm sewer system permit, otherwise known as MS4, from the Maryland Department of the Environment on October 31st, 2018. Within the permit, there are three, there are six minimum control measures that Calvert County must meet. They include public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control, pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations, and finally illicit discharge detection and elimination. Next slide. What is an illicit discharge? An illicit discharge is any direct or indirect non-stormwater release into a municipal separate storm sewer system. The discharges into the MS4 could come from a variety of sources and contain contaminants such as metals, hydrocarbons, lead, phosphorus, nitrogen, bacteria, and silt. These contaminants cause damage to the ecosystems and the overall health of our creeks, streams, river, and bay. The MS4 permit requires that Calvert County adopt an IDDE ordinance in order to screen outfalls for illicit discharges, take samples for testing, correct the illicit discharge, and impose fines for violations of the ordinance. Next slide. This past year, we completed 100 outfall inspections within the MS4 permit area, which includes Lusby, Dow, Appeal, Newtown, and Solomons. The screenings were performed after 72 hours of dry weather. The inspections included looking for signs of physical deterioration, verification of the outfall location, and dimensions and evidence of dry weather discharge. When inspecting for an illicit discharge, we're looking for a storm drain that has measurable flow during a dry weather period. The flow may have a unique discharge frequency and may have an unusual appearance or smell. The flow will also originate from a generating site or from a specific source area, meaning we can trace it back to a leaking piece of equipment, for example, or from a construction site where a contractor is de-watering a trench. Not all dry weather flows will be classified as an illicit discharge. The flow may not contain any pollutants or pathogens. Field testing is required to confirm if pollutants or pathogens are present. Next slide. Some of the possible direct sources include, some of the possible direct sources, once an illicit discharge is confirmed, can be sanitary sewer cross-connections, industrial or commercial cross-connection, and straight pipe discharges into the MS4. Next slide. Other indirect sources for an illicit discharge could come from groundwater seepage, accidental spills, direct pumping of contaminants into the MS4 inlets, outdoor vehicle and equipment washing, and non-target irrigation from landscape sprinkler systems. Next slide. The key components of an IDDE program include extensive mapping of the MS4 inlets, pipes, outfalls, and facilities, the adoption of an IDD ordinance, procedures for detecting illicit discharges, procedures for correcting illicit discharges, public education, record-keeping and training of county staff. Next slide. Pursuant to the requirements of the MS4 permit, Calvert County DPW has been mapping the extensive storm drain infrastructure. Efforts were initially prioritized to map the infrastructure within the permit area and were prioritized, I mean, and then the rest of the county continues to be mapped. The GIS software allows staff to enter information such as the installation date, the size, the condition of the structure, as well as link inspection reports and photographs to each record. Next slide. The adoption of the IDDE section of the, to the Stormwater Management Ordinance will spell out the prohibitions of illegal connections and/or discharges, the methods of protection to waterways, the permitting process for discharges from industrial or commercial activities, procedures for notifying DPW staff of accidental spills, the authorization of county staff or contractors to inspect and monitor for illicit discharges, and enforcement activities. Next slide. DPW will establish, will establish standard operating procedures for detecting potential illicit discharges, including notification when accidental spills occur, conducting routine inspections, and providing reporting, field screening, outfalls for physical and visual signs of illicit discharge while implementing the Outfall Reconnaissance Inventory, monthly inspections of National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permits, and quarterly inspections of stormwater permits. If an illicit discharge is suspected, then identifying the source will be the next step in the SOP, followed by tracking, field investigation, smoke test, dye test, and other methods of confirming the illicit discharge. Next slide, please. Once an illicit discharge is confirmed and the source is identified, the responsible party will be identified and contacted to inform them that the corrective action must be taken to eliminate the illicit discharge and a timeframe to complete any modifications to infrastructure necessary to complete the illicit discharge. Next slide. Another component of a successful IDDE program is public education. Calvert County works with the Maryland Extension Office to hold seminars and provide literature about recycling rainwater with rain barrels, how to identify an illicit discharge, and notify the county of it, and how to store and use fertilizers and pesticides in a manner that won't harm the environment. Next slide. Calvert County is required through the MS4 permit to maintain all records relating to stormwater management activities and IDDE inspections for a period of five years. A database will be developed to maintain the inspection report, citizen complaints, outfall investigations, and corrective actions. Both paper and electronic records will be maintained by Calvert County DPW and will be made available upon request. Next slide, please. As part of the MS4 permit from MDE, Calvert County must have staff trained in recognizing and reporting illicit discharges. The training must be completed every two years. The department currently has eight staff members that have completed the training in 2021 through Stormwater 1. Next slide, please. Public Works is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners hold a public hearing and allow 10 days for public comment on the inclusion of the IDDE to the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Thank you for your time today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we get a merit badge for this?
You just might.
Only if you read the first 44 pages.
Now, I'm only adding seven to the existing ordinance.
So this is just a revision of the existing ordinance, right, to meet our MS4 requirements?
Correct, because the MS4 requires us to have this section within our ordinance.
And the request today is just to hold a public hearing to move forward?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Motion?
Some.
Second?
Have a motion and a second that we move forward with the public hearing on the revisions made to the MS4 permit process. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen?
Thank you.
It's a beard contest. Kevin, you're losing.
I was almost ahead last year.
Next item under new business, Department of Finance and Budget, Board of Education. Next item under New Business, Department of Finance and Budget, Board of Education.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Oh, yes, it is. Oh, my gosh.
I know. I had in my notes, "Good morning," but I had to change that to "Good afternoon."
Sorry.
Beth Richmond, Deputy Director for Finance and Budget, and with me I have Edith Hutchins, CFO for the Board of Education. So I will read the background, the fiscal impact and conclusion, and then turn it over to Ed for the discussion section. So the subject is the Board of Education, a request to increase the FY22 operating budget. The background: at the end of FY21, the Board of Education, or BOE, revenues exceeded expenditures by $10,098,826. After a small adjustment for health insurance, the final amount that rolled to unassigned fund balance was $10,098,408. The BOE is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approval of a budget adjustment to increase the FY22 operating budget by $5,098,408. Fiscal impact: there is no fiscal impact to the county for this action. Conclusion recommendation: the staff recommends that the BOC approve the budget adjustment. Ed? Thank you. So as my colleague, I'm sorry, good afternoon, as my colleague just shared with you, I'm here today to request your approval to increase our operating budget by $5,098,408, the purpose of which is to make the contribution to the OPEP trust for the benefit of the Board of Education. And this is upon completing all of our transactions and processing for fiscal year '21, as well as completion of our fiscal year '21 financial audit, we ended up with $10,098,407.28 in our unassigned fund balance. In compliance with the Funding Formula Agreement between the Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners, we are requesting your approval to increase our budget so that we can make that contribution to OPEP for the amount of unassigned fund balance that exceeds $5 million. Any questions?
Questions?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve, approve it.
Second. So I have a motion and a second that we approve the budget adjustment for the Board of Education to move $5,998,408 for their OPEP contribution. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
For the people that aren't aware, what is OPEB?
Other Post-Employment Benefits.
Okay. So that is the retirement, basically, fund for the teachers and school and employees or?
Well, it's not really retirement. That is the fund that provides, or is supposed to eventually provide funding, to pay for the health insurance and life insurance that the school system pays on behalf of those employees, or retirees, I should say.
Okay. And there's ultimately no benefit to the Board of Education. This is just simply moving unassigned money that they can use for other things into this OPEB?
Yes, to help fund that trust, yes.
Okay.
And those payments are just determined by the?
Actuary?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
This is going over my head. And that's the determined fee or budget adjustment that's needed to cover that cost for this year, correct?
Well, this amount wasn't actuarially, actuarially determined. The actuary determines how much money needs to be in the trust ultimately to pay those costs, but this amount is strictly based on the Funding Formula Agreement.
And that still leaves you with a surplus of $5 million?
Yes, in the unassigned fund balance, or $4,999. I think it's a dollar under five.
So is that the total amount in your fund balance category?
Total fund balance, including committed, no. We have committed fund balance for things like health insurance, transportation costs. So I think that's somewhere around $13 million, committed fund balance.
So the total of committed and uncommitted phone, fund balance is?
Hmm, probably about $17, $18 million.
All right. Any other discussion?
So Ed, how are you guys, I know we made a very aggressive approach to taking care of OPEB, and you know, we may have to lean on that in the future. How, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but like, out of 100%, how, how fully funded do you feel that account is at this point? And I know I'm putting you on the spot.
No, I'm trying to remember. We just had an actuarial report done on that a few months ago. I'm trying to remember what the actuary determined as far as the funding level. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking it's about 50% funded, but I would need to go back and look at the report again.
I think those numbers will be really important, especially down the road, you know, when we see Kerwin and everything to give us a total picture. Obviously, we know we have to fund that OPEB account, you know, that's, and, but I like that we're in good position. So.
Yes, we're actually doing very well with that compared to other counties. When I say we, I mean, the, the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education, a lot has come from the Dominion Pilot and the contributions that the county was able to make with the pilot, in addition to the contributions that we have been able to make as a result of the Funding Formula Agreement. One of the discussions that we've had, you're a Director of Budget and Finance, myself, and the actuary, is looking into at what point, as the funding level reaches sufficient funding for us to begin to then make those payments for retiree benefits directly from the trust. So we're not there yet, but that's a conversation that we have had, that we're looking to get to.
I took a lot of heat about it years ago, but you know, it, it doesn't go away, you know, and it's mandated.
Correct.
So it, you know, you can't run from it. You gotta embrace it. And, and I knew back then that, you know, there was a huge number, and we were just, you know, one bite at the apple at a time, you know, so I'm, I'm very happy to hear that it's, it's doing well.
And we appreciate your support, and I think one of the benefits that comes from the trust is, once you begin funding it, just like with any other investment, the growth adds to your assets, correct?
And we've had to lean on it a little bit at times, so it keeps going well. So, good.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under New Business, 2021 Compensation Review Board Recommendations. Come on down.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I was gonna say good morning, but it's afternoon.
I know. I believe we know you. I believe we know you all.
One of them didn't recognize me.
Yeah.
I think he's sitting everywhere in here at one point.
Just about, I think so, yeah. So whoever's in charge.
Good afternoon, thank you. Unfortunately, I had the distinct pleasure to do this four years ago as Vice Chair, and when it came up time for vote for Chair, somebody motioned that I become the Chair, so he became the Vice Chair. But thank you. We have a task. And you are? Tony DiStefano, Chair, Wilson Perrin, Anna Vermillion. You have seven members on that were appointed. Bill Cooper, Cassandra Okabuma, I probably said that wrong, Mark Frisco, and Randy Smith, in addition to us three. The task was to provide a review of the compensation for the elected officials of various positions, the Treasurer, the Sheriff, the Judge of the Orphans Court, Commissioners, the Commissioner President's salary, the State's Attorney, and Board, Board of Education. We held three. We were under a very short timeframe. We were appointed on October 5th. We had outstanding staff support from Ashley, and we thank you for that. We got together on our first meeting on November 9th, both in person and virtual. We selected the 18th as a next meeting date, and then the 22nd, we met to go over the recommendation that you have before you that we will be presenting today. That was virtually. All of those meetings were announced and open to the public. We had no public comments. We offered to the individuals that we had to review the salaries for, for the next four years that take effect at the next elections. We had one response from the Sheriff that elected to show up if we needed him. No other individuals came to any of the hearings. And before you, we have a proposal for the next four years for the Treasurer to be at $48,000 each of the next four years, for the Sheriff who is, whose salary was set by this board four years ago, to be maintained at that of the salary of the Lieutenant Colonel for the Maryland State Police, to be maintained at that same level again for the next four years. For the Judges of the Orphans Court, no change in the, in the base pay under the current legislation. The Commissioners hold fast at $48,000 for each of the next four years. The Commission President would get $50,500, which is $2,500 more for the additional duties. The State's Attorney did send a note to the Board indicating that they were comfortable with the annotated code that provides the salary. The Board of Education did not appear or ask for any changes in the, in the, in the salaries. We did not then consider any changes. I want to say that John was extremely helpful in, in providing all of the answers to the questions and, and the background. Ashley, once again, did a fantastic job, even to the point of promising us on our last meeting day that she would have the information to us by Friday, and at 11:30 that night, we got it so that we could review it over the weekend to discuss it on the, on our next meeting, which was the 22nd, in order to comply with the timeframe, to be here on the 30th, so that you would have the recommendation by the first. Wilson assisted, Anna was here, and we did an outstanding job, I think, in, in that short timeframe that we had to get this done. I will say that the previous four years ago, we had months to do this, and we got a chance to talk to everybody. We did give everybody the opportunity, and, and we did, I, I feel, take advantage of all of the opportunities to, to give everybody a fair chance to say their piece. And with that, do you have any questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I've always thought that the pay for the Board of Education was extr- is extremely low. I don't know if you've checked the surrounding counties to see what their pay is. I, we have boards that work under us that actually are paid more money, I believe, than the actual Board of Education, I think. But that's just, you know.
We, we gave them, we gave them an opportunity. We had no one show up. We felt that if, if they were unhappy with what they had, that they would have asked for, for something. We, we did give them that opportunity.
Well, I think politically, nobody would come forward and ask for more money, especially with, you know, any type of election year coming up. It's just, I just know what the salary happens to be, and it's, it's, it's hard to attract good candidates for a position that actually costs some money to, to go to the meetings and do. And I know me and Wilson both served on that board, so we're very aware of it. I actually never got a paycheck. I actually had to pay them more money so I could buy into the health insurance plan. That's how bad it is.
Right.
So I think we could attract more people to run for the position if there was a higher pay. That's just my 20%.
If I could comment on that, Commissioner, there's still the option of, they can go to the legislators to request an increase.
Right.
Because I remember, remember, I think they get $6,500 now, or something close to that.
I thought it was $5,000.
Six, $6,500.
$6,500.
So I think it's, it's, they, they have the option of going to the legislators. They did not request any consideration from the Compensation Review Board.
Right. And, and we did give them ample opportunity for, within the timeframe. They never responded.
Right.
Plus, as you know, it's for the incoming.
Sure. The next board.
Incumbents. Not the incumbents, but the newly elected.
Right. And that's what, that was my thought process, is it would get more people involved and maybe, you know, more people would run for the position.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Motion?
Just, just a comment. I want to thank all of y'all for your hard work before we have the motion, sorry.
And you guys are right. Ashley's pretty incredible, and she was that time turnaround. You have to sometimes tell her, hey, don't respond now. It just popped in my brain, and it's 10 o'clock at night. Don't respond now.
Well, I told her I'd ask, ask for a raise for her, but she said I couldn't do that.
I thought Steve was gonna say he was glad he didn't recommend.
That wasn't within the purview of the Compensation Review Board. She wasn't on the list, but she, she deserves one.
Commissioner, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on, on this board. The work of, how this board worked together in such a short timeline, and John keeping us legal at all times, and Ashley, it was a pleasure to serve.
We appreciate all of you putting in your time.
Thank you.
Motion?
Well, apparently, there is no motion necessary.
I thought there was, to adopt the recommendations.
Again, it's the Board's pleasure. If you wish to adopt the recommendations today, we're coming back on the 14th of December with all the legislative items.
Oh, you're gonna include it in those. Okay, I'm sorry.
Now, this is done every year, right?
Four years.
Four years.
Okay.
Right before the election.
Now.
Right.
There's a reason for that.
I said it wasn't necessary, but I, I will make a motion that we accept the Compensation Review Board's recommendations. Second.
I motion a second that we accept the recommendations of the Compensation Review Board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your work and your effort.
I would, I would say that you should put on the calendar for three years and six months from now to do this again and give us sufficient time, us or whomever you appoint.
We might not be here, though.
Ashley, if you're in the back room, can you take note of that, please?
It's like herding cats.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Board of Health.
I have a motion to recess the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and convene a meeting of the Calver County Board of Health.
Second?
I'd second if I could.
I have a motion and a second that we convene as the Calver County Board of Health. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Polsky, how are you?
I'm doing good, thanks. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I am here to discuss a COVID vaccination clinic for children and teens that we would propose holding this Saturday, December 4th, at our new Health Department Vaccination Location at the Fox Run Shopping Center near the Giant. Pointing out that Calver County is off to a great start with vaccinations of five to 11-year-olds. We currently have the third highest vaccination rate in Maryland, and we'd like to keep that momentum going by providing parents an additional option as we head into the holiday season and family gatherings. Although the two-dose vaccination series won't be complete prior to Christmas, two weeks after the first dose, studies have shown at least 70, 70, excuse me, 70% protection against COVID infections. The second dose, if we start on the 4th, the second dose will be offered the week between Christmas and New Year's, and full protection will be in place shortly after children return from their winter break. Children will not only be at less risk from the health effects of COVID, but also disruptions to school and extracurricular activities. And as always, we encourage parents to talk to their children's healthcare providers if they have questions about the vaccination. We'll have separate, we plan to have separate vaccination stations for five to 11-year-olds and for their siblings who are 12 and older. This is important since the doses are different for the two age groups, and we want to assure that each child and teens receive their proper amount of vaccine. We expect to have some local doctors and nurse practitioners volunteering alongside of our Health Department staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will point out that, you know, one of the reasons that we chose to do this on this date is not just the timing. Again, we want to make sure that parents have the opportunity to get their children vaccinated before families get together, but we know that for a lot of parents, they work Monday through Friday when typical medical offices are open, and they sometimes don't have a chance to get their children in, and also appointments at many offices are limited. So again, this is an opportunity that parents would be with their children, bring them in, and in, and, and hopefully take advantage of a little bit of extra protection.
So a parent, so a parent or a legal guardian would bring their child in to request the vaccination?
Correct.
And where's the clinic gonna be held?
So our new location, for, many people are aware, because a lot of our residents came to our drive-through location down on two thirty-one. We just moved this past week into an actual indoor location, so this winter, people won't be freezing. And it is, if you're facing the Giant in Prince Frederick, it's just a few doors to the left of that.
And did you tell me, or did I hear, there, that none of the practices in the county are vaccinating children?
No, that's not correct, but, but some are and some are not. And so there are, and, and there are a series of logistical issues with the vaccine. It's not, we've not heard from any of the offices that they don't want their patients vaccinated, but there are logistical issues that are making it difficult at this point for some of the offices to provide within their office. And so it's an opportunity, I know that we've heard from some of the physicians who currently are not vaccinating in their office, that they are looking to come in and volunteer on Saturday so that maybe that some of their patients can come and they can vaccinate their own patients.
Doctor, are these shots available at like the Giants and the stuff like that, the children's ones?
They are.
They are, okay. I knew the adult ones were, I didn't know if the.
But not at all. And there are some pharmacists that are not comfortable vaccinating children. And so in some pharmacies, the vaccines are available for adults or older teens, but they're not necessarily available for, for children.
Okay. So in Calver, do we know who is and who isn't vaccinating children, as far as pharmacies and doctors' offices?
I don't have a list with me. But certainly for anyone who is interested through their own healthcare provider, it's, you know, picking up the phone and giving them a call and they can find out.
Because that might be good information to distribute for parents, for whatever reason can't make Saturday, if their own practitioner's not doing the shots, at least they'd know where to go to try to get an appointment.
Right. I, I know that Bay Shore Pediatrics has been vaccinating, I know that Dr. Metta's office has been vaccinating, and Dr. Hui. The others, I'm not a hundred percent certain on practice by practice.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Polsky, for presenting the information that you did today in a positive manner and positive light. Thank you.
My pleasure.
I guess we're good, if we don't have any more questions.
Okay. And I know you're running behind. If you wanted me to talk about a new variant for a minute or two, I'm happy to. If not, I understand, and we'll have some information out on our website shortly.
I don't know that there's a whole lot to talk about based on what I hear in the news, but maybe next time.
Very good.
We'll have more information by then.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You have another motion for me?
I have a motion, Mr. President, to adjourn the meeting of the Calver County Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
I have a motion in a second that we, excuse me, adjourn the meeting of the Calver County Board of Health and reconvene as the Calver County Board of Commissioners. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment?
There you go.
Thank you. I know there are a couple people in the room that look like they're ready to provide public comment. We're gonna ask them to please walk up to the microphone, identify yourselves by name and address, and identify whether you're speaking on behalf of a group or as an individual. A designated representative of a group will be given five minutes, an individual will be given two. We also have two callers on the line. If they would please press star nine if you wish to provide public comment, we will get to you as we finish those in the room.
I'm Dr. Charles Bennett, making comments as an individual. I'm a family practice physician who retired three years ago after practicing family medicine in my hometown of Losby for over thirty-seven years. This year, I've been a volunteer in the Health Department's COVID vaccination program, including taking vaccinations to many individuals who were homebound. I speak to you today in support of Dr. Larry Polsky's leadership of the Calver County Health Department. I remind you of the letter that each of you were sent individually about a week and a half ago that was signed by over fifty healthcare practitioners in Calver County. This included the large majority of the primary care practitioners in our county. The latter asked that you quote, "Consider that Dr. Polsky is exemplary healthcare officer and should be allowed to continue his exceptional work in that cap, in that capacity." I remind you of the petition online in support of Dr. Polsky at change.org that has received over eighteen hundred signatures in support of Dr. Polsky since it was first posted twelve days ago. I remind you of the many helpful initiatives started by the Health Department under Dr. Polsky's leadership, including the drug overdose program. Overdose deaths are now fifty-six percent less likely for a Calver County resident than for the average Maryland resident. The Rational Reentry Program that he started through the Calver Detention Center. During the first three years of operation, those inmates who enrolled in the program had a recidivism rate that went from ninety-seven percent down to twenty-four percent. As a result of this, those individuals are committing fewer crimes, have less substance abuse, and their children are growing up in more stable households. In my opinion, these programs are helpful for our brave police officers, those working at the detention center, our first responders, and our teachers. In my opinion, in the opinion also of the majority of those practicing primary care medicine in Calver County, in the opinion also of the over eighteen hundred individuals who have, who have signed the online petition, and many others, Dr. Polsky should continue as the leader of the County, Calver County Health Department.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public comment?
It's nice to know I don't have to wear this. And it's nice to see you all in your native environment instead of at a Boy Scout Eagle Court of Honor, but we anticipate seeing you again soon. There are quite a, quite a lot of them in the pipeline. I came here thinking I was gonna be talking a lot about the IDDE, which I also attempted to read at least four times.
I'm sorry, sir. If you could give us your name and whether we're speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Bob Estes. They all know me, but I know we're recording, so.
As an individual or?
Individual.
Thank you.
Individual, yes. And, but, and I was questioning the release time and the, and why it's important to, to get this out so quickly, and it seems that they're a little bit behind the eight ball, but this is a very complex ordinance that they're, they're showing, as I think, Mr. Gadway, you attempted to read through it and could probably back me up on that. So I'm not exactly sure in this season of holidays and we've got the, you know, a lot of actions coming up on the Prince Frederick Town Center plans and all that, why this has to be done so quickly. This ordinance, especially the stormwater management portion, is very important for how we're going to move forward in, in the county, and for me specifically in Prince Frederick, it's gotta be done right. It, it does talk a great deal about the design manual that the state of Maryland, and there are parts of that design manual that I don't believe apply well to Calver County. It's a, it's a generalized approach. I did attend the Environmental Commission meeting last night, and they would also like to be providing you with guidance on this, and I'm, I'm hoping that in this quick turnaround that they'll be able to do that. I'm not, they're not always fast, but they have some people on, on that commission that are quite familiar with stormwater management. And I'm hoping that they will also get to have a chance to advise you, because they are the people that are tasked to advise you on the environment. But also, the, the CBL report today, I'd like to mention also that my Friends of Hunting Creek Group also have tested all three of the Hunting Creek watershed sites. In addition, we tested fourteen sites in that watershed, and there are others that are, that are also Friends Groups that are also doing the same. And that's more or less the end of me then, I guess.
Yes, if you could please wrap it up.
Okay, well, that's enough for now, I guess. And by the way, I do want to say that DPW, in some instances, are definitely doing a great job behind the shopping center over by the theater, and I understand they're going to be doing some significant work by the senior center, which is, which is a terrible site. They're not exactly sure how they're gonna do it, but I applaud them for taking that on.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to provide public comment? And again, please press star nine if you're on the phone and would like to provide public comment.
My name is Nick DeFelice. I speak on behalf of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 109, so a group. Thank you, Commissioner McConkey, Mr. Willis, Ms. Woodson, and Ms. Rander since left. Words matter and actions are even more important. Your follow-up and professionalism doesn't go unnoticed by the county employees. Comments such as "what's lost is lost" or "the employees want raises" are tone deaf to reality. I would like to commend the Benefits Committee on the healthcare rollout, which provided some wiggle room to provide the back merit steps, back merit steps, not raises to county employees. Healthcare is a collaborative effort shared by the employer and the employee. I often use the analogy that we change the oil in the car before it breaks down. This should be promoted regarding the wellness similar to other private partners in other jurisdictions. I hope this is a step in the right direction to review county policies, procedures that are common practice in neighboring jurisdictions, including hazard, tech, language, and a variety of other compensation packages that will ultimately promote recruiting, retention, and diversity in our workforce. For far too long, budgets have been balanced on the backs of county employees. Sir, what I lost, what my constituents lost, was money that will never be recouped. My son's savings accounts and for my coworkers' retirements. In several instances, I've been injured where I almost had medically retire when my wife was pulling off my boots. That step would have made a difference, huge. And we've had several members of our FOP that had to resort to that. As you're aware, all of our county deputies, in many cases, are paid twenty-five less than other jurisdictions, which continues to grow. We plan to present that to Annapolis next week, specifically dealing with ARPA pay. ARPA funding for the essential non-teleworking employee must be addressed today. For over, for twenty-five, for the two-hundred-and-fifty deputies and correctional deputies I speak for, not to mention the sanitation, highway, and essential staff, COVID hit his heart. I can only speak from personal experience. I was put in isolation. I could only work with three people for approximately two and a half months. I was in quarantine no less than five times. I lost wages on additional things for having to stay home in order to serve our community, just like our highway, sanitation, and correctional deputies. This summer, I corresponded with many of you sitting on this board regarding how other jurisdictions are utilizing CARES and ARPA funding. A good portion of the county employees received a number of CCED emails from department heads regarding COVID pay. I'd like to make note, light of them, but this is a very serious topic. Since that email, the only thing that we have seen as county employees is a County Times article. There has been no follow-up, no misprint, or no retractions. I've had the benefits compare those numbers to the County Times article, and they're extremely accurate, except for the employee compensation. In the past few weeks, I've been told that ARPA funding for county employees continues to decline, again, with no official word from anybody here, except for correspondence with Commissioner McConkey. Gentlemen, the county employee, your first responders operate at the speed of now, not Calver County government. I urge you to make a decision on the funds you have available and sit in an account as neighbors, as neighboring jurisdictions have through hazard pay, tech pay, and COVID relief pay. I'd be more than happy to assist Ms. Woodson, Mr. Willis, or any one of you sitting on this board to find a solution who meets that criteria. In the coming weeks, we'll present our Raise the Line campaign to Annapolis, which will highlight this and many other disparities at the Calver County Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, two eight two eight, please press star six to unmute yourself. Identify yourself by name and address and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Good afternoon, the Board of Commissioners and the audience. This is Joe Turella, twenty-eight oh five, Adelina Road. I'm calling to request a reversal of the decision for Dr. Polsky to resign. It will be very difficult to find a more dedicated, innovative, and expert public health leader. The medical community feel that it would be a grave loss. Dr. Polsky has kept us ahead of the curve, particularly during the epidemic of opioid use disorder and the COVID pandemic. He has provided our health providers and the Board of Commissioners with the most up-to-date COVID science and, and community health status. He does updates on a weekly basis. Although the Calver Board of Commissioners are the county's Board of Health, they do not have the background in health nor the environment. We should not expect our elected officials to be expert in these areas of science, but we should expect them to be responsible leaders in keeping the health and welfare of our citizens ahead of any perceived political inconvenience. We should expect the Commissioners to realize and value Dr. Polsky's information and guidance, even if it's inconvenient to do so. With the Omicron variant on our horizon, this is the worst of times for such a decision. You for listening.
Thank you. Caller with last four digits, three four one three, please press star six to unmute yourself and identify yourself by name and address and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Yes, my name is Mark Smith. I live at two thirty-three five, Acacia Road in Port Republic, and I'm speaking as an individual. And I am calling to request that Dr. Polsky continue in, in his position in the fabulous job he's done over the past few years. I ask the county commissioners to recognize the excellent service that he has provided. Dr. Bennett, I think, spoke very well about that, and as a very highly esteemed health professional, you should please listen to him and to the other professionals who are really here to help us to protect our health. I ask you to look at the data. Calver County is at the top of the list in the state in terms of percentage of active cases of COVID and of deaths, and I believe much of that can be attributed to the excellent service Dr. Polsky has provided. I, for one, was able to get a booster shot early in the game. I think he recognized the importance of this and was prescient. And again, don't play politics with our health. Listen to the professionals, do what's right for the county. It's going to save lives. Keep Dr. Polsky in his position. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, we have one more caller on the line. Caller zero-two-eight-two, we are now ready to receive your comment. Please push star nine to unmute yourself.
Star, sorry, star six to unmute yourself.
Excuse me, star six.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Janet Ashby. I live at four zero zero nine Dogwood Road, Port Republic, two zero six seven six. I'll keep it short. I am also calling because I'm quite concerned about the reports that Dr. Polsky has been asked to resign. I'd actually be interested in hearing from the commissioners whether that is in fact true. I would like you to listen to what the health professionals such as Dr. Bennett and Dr. Lucinda Keller have said. I'm not a health professional myself, and so I trust them and I trust Dr. Polsky. I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask one more time, if anybody on the phone would like to provide public comment, please press star nine now. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving, and I have a few events here from the Parks and Rec- Parks and Recreation Department I'd like to, to let you know, and one of those is the Jingle Bell Jamboree. This event will be held on Saturday, December fourth, twenty-twenty-one, from three, three to six P.M. at King Memorial Park, sixty-five Church Street in Prince Frederick. Next, get in the spirit with fun holiday decorations throughout the park in the heart of Old Town Prince Frederick. Play games. of Old Town Prince Frederick, play games, enjoy local food, trucks, holiday music. Don't forget your camera for pictures with Santa and Mrs. Claus, there is no cost to attend and registration is not required. For more information about local Parks and Rec events, please visit our website, www.calvercountymarilyn.com.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Congress.
Yeah, I just want to send my condolences to the family of Ms. Vivian Hawkins. She was an amazing woman, she was the second mom to many, many kids in Calver County, she ran a daycare center right there in Huntingtown. She's just an amazing person, if you knew her, most people did, if you would have seen her funeral procession, you would, you'd understand, and I want to thank the Calver County Sheriff's Office who did a phenomenal job with the procession, going all the way from Prince Frederick to Dunkirk with over 100 cars, so that's all I have.
Mr. Gadway?
First of all, thank you for all the 537 now people that have subscribed to our YouTube channel. Please, if you have not, so, hit the subscribe button so we can go ahead and get to the thousand mark before the end of the year, so we can get free closed captioning for those hearing impaired throughout our county. We are happy to announce a new COVID testing clinic that will be, the announcement came out yesterday, will be in Dunkirk, that may be expanding into other areas. Saturday, the 4th, I believe, my distinguished Commissioner Hart also mentioned, from 4 to 6, please come out for the Chambers Christmas Event at 70 Church Street at the Linden. And on one other notice, I noticed this morning, it was actually snowing, I guess winter is nearly here. Mr. Willis, did schools start on time this morning?
Yes, Commissioner, they did.
I would like to commend the schools and the busing and everyone else for braving the snowstorm this morning and making sure all of our students got to school safely today. Thank you.
Mr. Weems?
I just want to extend my condolences to the friends and family of Mary Catherine Fraser, who is the wife of former County Commissioner and Mayor of North Beach, Mark Fraser. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody, today is Giving Tuesday, if you didn't spend all your money on Black Friday or Cyber Monday and you have some left to donate to help your favorite charity, today is the day that you should do that. Also, we remind people that the Community Conversations Meeting about substance abuse disorders is at the Prince Frederick Library on December 15th from 6 to 8, you can come in person or zoom in. That's all I have. Mr. Weems?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to General, General Provisions Article Sections Number 1, 3-305B1I, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of an appointee, employee, or official over whom it has jurisdiction, and 2, 3-305B12, to discuss a personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals.
Second? Have a motion and a second, that we go into executive session, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, you have a great day.